All right, it is four o'clock and today is Wednesday, August 7th, 2024. And we are getting ready to start our closed session meeting here. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak or any correspondence on our closed session items?
No requests to speak, and the council did receive closed session correspondence this evening.
And we have those here.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, council members, let's go ahead and recess to closed session, and we will return at six o'clock for our regular meeting. Thank you. We're almost ready. All right, so welcome. It is, today is Wednesday, August 7th, 2020-24. It is 6:00 PM, so I'm going to go ahead and call our regular meeting to order. I'll ask our city attorney, do we have anything to report, any actions from the city council in closed session?
Not this evening, Mayor. Lots of good, robust discussion, but no reportable action.
Very good, thank you for the report. And I'll ask our clerk, do we have any correspondence that's received on tonight's agenda?
Yeah, the city council's received correspondence on item 7, 10.16, 11.2, and 11.1 in their red folders.
Okay, they're in there. Thank you very much. With that, would you mind calling roll, please?
Councilmember Estrada.
Here.
Councilmember Carwin.
Here.
Councilmember Sobek.
Mayor Protem Dynas.
Here.
And Mayor Zimmerman.
And I'm here, thank you. So I believe we have the ministry leader, James Eagleman, from Revival Christian Church, who is Revival Christian Fellowship, who's here with us. If you don't mind coming to the podium, please, and we want to, first of all, thank you for being willing to help set the tone for tonight's council meeting and give us some words of inspiration. Welcome, sir.
Excellent, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Thank you everyone for being here, for having me as well. It's definitely a great opportunity for us to, as a community, to come together like this and be able to share with one another. Like the mayor said, I am a ministry leader at Revival Christian Fellowship. I'm actually also a chaplain with the Mariota Police Department. Hold that against me, I know it's a different city, but it's a great opportunity to be here. So with that being said, would you guys all please join me in a word of prayer? Father, thank you so much for this time, this opportunity, Lord, that you have provided for the city and then the council members and the mayor and everyone to get together, Lord, that you would just have your hand upon this time and that you would guide and direct this moment, Lord, that you would just help give them the wisdom that they need to continuously guide and direct this city, Lord, down the path that you want it to go down. We're very grateful, Lord, for this opportunity and grateful for this city. God, we just ask too that you would have your hand upon this entire city and all the different facets of this city, everything from the police department to the fire departments and everything that encompasses this entire city, Lord, that you would just watch over them, keep them safe, protect them all, and then again, you would just guide our council members, guide the mayor, and just, please just bless them, Lord, and allow them to just be part of this city, Lord, that you've called them to be, and guide and direct them as well. So again, we just thank you for this time, thank you for this city and this opportunity, Lord, and we just pray this in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Eagleman, we appreciate you coming today. All right, we have someone who's very special in the audience with us today. She is an ambassador for our Chamber of Commerce, and she comes to many of our meetings. Her name is Beverly Green. Beverly, do you mind leading us in our flag salute, please? Let's all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Beverly. For those of you who don't know, we have a Chamber of Commerce right here in our town, and we have a group of ambassadors that work with them. Beverly is one of them, her husband Damian is as well, and it's just wonderful when we go to events to welcome new businesses, to have folks like that that are there, making everyone who attends feel welcome, and so thank you guys for your commitment to our chamber. All right, we're going to move on on our agenda. We're on item five, this is presentations. There are three council members, these are all updates, so we don't go to the front on these, and I'm going to go ahead and call on our chief financial officer, Mr. Hickey, to give us an ERP Financial Management System update. That's our new accounting program, it's our two-year budget, and you have this brand-new system, so maybe you can give us an update of where we are.
Sounds good. Yeah, we don't get shiny new toys like fire trucks and police cars, but we do get accounting systems, so. So, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council, members of the community and city staff, it's my pleasure to be here tonight with Margarita Cornejo, our deputy finance director, to provide an update on the city's ERP project. Typical implementations take about two years, and some can drag on many more. I'm happy to report that the project is on track with our anticipated timeline and running under budget. The project was approved by council in February of last year, and while some tasks remain, we wanted to update the council and community on the progress to date, including our go-live of the finance module, which occurred on July 1st of 2024. So taking a step back, an ERP, or Enterprise Resource Planning System, is a software platform organizations use to manage and integrate the essential parts of their operations. Beyond just a finance system, ERPs integrate essential functions with planning, business licensing, human resources, advanced staff scheduling, vendor employee, citizens transparency portals, and more. Major benefits of an ERP include the free flow of communication between business processes, a single source of information, and accurate, real-time data reporting. The city's current finance system, known as Eden, was created in 1997 and was adopted with the city's incorporation in 2008. The end-of-life support for Eden is scheduled for March of 2027. So the city selected Munis ERP, offered by Tyler Technologies, a system specifically designed for governmental agencies and used by hundreds of cities nationwide. So part of the ERP implementation was a Name the ERP contest, and many worthy entries were received, but ultimately the name Menefee Metro was selected, and you'll see it themed throughout the presentation. So at this time, I'd like to ask Margarita to come up and walk through the specifics on our project.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members and members of the public. So the overall project goal of the ERP was to consolidate, streamline, and integrate a new solution system that would provide better resources for the city in its financial management and delivery of municipal services. That all aligns with the city's strategic plan, specifically in the thriving economy, and it also connects with the city's kind of motto, to always strive for things that are new, better, and best. By selecting a new ERP solution, the city is continually embracing new innovative solutions and striving to provide better services to our community with top-quality delivery of them. So the city's project approach and strategy in executing this project implementation really concentrated on three elements. Identifying a team of people that would consecutively work on the project throughout the process, looking at the city's processes beyond the existing system, and embracing the new solution, connecting all of them to provide a cohesive implementation process. So from the onset of the project, a core ERP city team was structured, starting with a project sponsored, represented by our CFO, an executive steering committee represented by our HR and finance departments, as well as IT, a finance core team on the finance side to work on the first year of the financial side, a human resources core team to support the human resources element, as well as consistent and strong support from IT staff in the implementation process. Beyond that, the entire organization has been impacted and has contributed and collaborated, ranging from the entire finance department to department executive staff, department managers, analysts, and management aides. In respect to the process improvements and what has been accomplished to date, it's just an overhaul of looking at process and system consolidation. There has been a number of processes that were done outside of the system, such as budget transfer processing and journal entries that were either done through other solutions and/or as manual processes that have now been converted and consolidated into the Munis system or Menefee Metro. The city also looked holistically at our chart of accounts, which for finance is basically our alphabet, and took that as an opportunity to look at an existing kind of stoic alphabet that had a limited amount of letters in it, if you will, and did not provide the ability to provide more expanded and detailed reporting. In the beginning of this project, the agency as a whole had some very in-depth conversations on what kind of chart of accounts would best serve an agency, now that we have more expanded departments and divisions as well, and was able to update those and implement those as part of the project itself. The agency has also embraced enhanced data security processes and protocols, working with our IT department in everything from system user access to updates to make this a more robust system that is managed at a more industry-standard element, and looking at ways to streamline and automate processes and workflows, everything from purchases to approvals of invoices. The ERP project implementation process kind of can be highlighted in these main steps. To date, we now stand where the go-live date is of July 1st, 2024. That was the goal when we came in February of 2023, and we're happy to say we were able to accomplish that. We're working through post-go-live activities in the financial side, and we're well on our way to working through the HR side with a go-live date of January 1st, 2025. In quantified, kind of more specific things, I won't go through every single one, but the city has been able to navigate the planning, delivery, and as we navigate now in system deployment and optimization and support in streamlining the project to moving to more of the support element and moving towards some of those outward-facing components of the ERP, which will include a more robust and consolidated transparency portal for the public to access. As our CFO communicated, we, along with the project itself, have been able to manage the project budget within the original established budget, which was at $2.1 million. To date, the city has encumbered or spent about 1.8 within available and allocated budget of just over $300,000. Without any additional significant changes, the city anticipates that the project will come actually below budget. The only contract amendment that has been processed to date was one that was approved in March, and that related to expansion of the advanced scheduling to capture the entire PD. As the agency started looking into it, we found an opportunity to consolidate our time sheet and scheduling system into one uniform solution that the entire agency could use instead of having different solutions as we currently have for the last few years. The project timeline stands on schedule, and the financial side, we have gone through the kickoff, the business process assessment, data migration and conversion, new system testing and users, and again, where we stand today is really in the support side and some final components, like the transparency portal. On the HR side, which started later in the process, we have started kickoff, we're going through business process assessment, and where we stand right now is actual system setup and configuration, moving towards payroll, parallel payroll processing systems later in the fall, and training by the end of the calendar year with an effective kind of system up and running in January. And with that, I will return it back to our CFO, Travis.
Thank you, Margarita. So looking at the next steps, we still have a few tasks to complete for the overall project, the executive insight dashboard and citizen transparency portal, which require us to gather some data in the system before we can roll those out, but those are expected in the fall of this year, along with continuing the system setup configuration and updates also scheduled for the next few months. Lastly, is the, as Margarita mentioned, the implementation of the human capital module, which is the payroll and human resources part of it, planned for January of 2025. So with that, I really just wanted to take a moment to express my sincere gratitude and thanks to the entire finance, HR, and IT departments for their endless hard work and dedication in accomplishing such a major undertaking, coming in on time and under budget despite staff turnover in key project personnel. I want to also thank the staff in every other department for their assistance, input, eagerness, willingness to learn and accept the new system. I want to thank the city manager and executive office for their guidance, support, and leadership throughout the project, and most importantly, want to thank the city council for their support of the project and allocating the resources necessary to ensure successful implementation. So the project is truly an organization-wide endeavor, and I'm proud to be a part of it. So with that, we are happy to take any questions.
All right, Mr. Hickey, thank you. Excellent report to you and to Margarita. Council members, do we have any feedback, or are we okay? And I just want to say, thank you for the update, it's great to see good progress. Go ahead, Councilmember Sobek's first.
Thank you. You know what, I just want to commend staff for coming under budget and on time. I remember when this was presented to us, and it was a montemmentus, going to be huge. And I know that we had some staff turnover as well, so just congratulations on this. I noticed in the warrant register, on this cycle, it was much easier to read, and I was happy about that, so just congratulations.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
On the transparency portal, is that where the residents can go in and see how their money's being spent, as it were?
Yes, exactly.
Good. I just want to make sure that our residents know that we're working on that, and that was an important part of our system, so that they can go in there and look at expenditures and things like that. And also that, even though you've got the HR, or human capital, and the other one, that's still included in the overall budget, there's no extra money needed for those two other modules.
Correct, that money's already encumbered, it was part of that $1.8 million that's part of the project cost.
I just want to make sure that's clear, that we're not, you're not coming back asking for more money, that this takes care of all of it.
No, and really, it's worth pointing out also that part of our savings really is from the hard work of the finance, HR, and IT teams, really not bringing in additional personnel to cover their desk while we worked on the project. So they really did their jobs, their day-to-day jobs, and made time for the project, coming in on their Fridays off, you know, putting in overtime, and so that was a big part of our project savings.
Also, a final thing, it's not a question, but more of a statement, congratulations. Having been involved in things like this in the past, having it happen behind the scene without any problems or anything rising to the top that we'd have to look at is a statement to how well your team brought this up and running and everything. It was seamless, and congratulations to everybody.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that, and it's truly sincere thanks to the council for giving us the budget to be able to do it. So a lot of places are stretched for resources and try to do it on a bare-bones budget, and that's where you see the problems, so we did it right.
All right, well done, thank you very much, we appreciate you both. All right, we're going to move on to item 5.2, this is our...
Mayor, may I interrupt? I'm sorry, we do have a public comment on that item.
On that item, okay, I'm sorry. Would you go ahead and call that?
Francisco Urbina.
Okay. Welcome, Mr. Urbina, this is for our ERP Financial Management System.
Okay, greetings, Mayor, and remember, a father figure to me, I'm glad you're here, because someone needs to speak up for the senior citizens of Sun City, that developer, this crooked developer trying to build on open space, blah, blah, that's litigation. Anyway, what is being done about the homeless? I was homeless, the city supposedly, according to the press enterprise, in May of 2023...
Mayor, if I could, Mr. Urbina, we're right now talking about a presentation on the ERP, which is the city's financial management software? If you'd like to make a comment during general public comments on the subjects that you're raising, you certainly welcome to.
I will. Why is there staff turnover? Is there someone interviewing, doing exit interviews? I mentioned during this presentation that was given by that young lady, that there's staff turnover. There's always going to be staff turnover, but how can we attract and keep the best employees like Brendan Dahlde? I hated to see him go.
Mayor, if, Mr. Urbina, we really are trying to talk about the financial management software.
And I was talking about that, I disagree with you, thank you. First Amendment right, constitutional freedom of speech, thank you.
All right, and you're certainly welcome to fill out a speaker slip for our public comments on non-agenda matters, and that's a perfect time to share those thoughts, so thank you, sir. All right, let's go ahead and move on, we're still on item 5.2, this is presentations, and that is our police department quarterly update. I believe Chief Carr's on his way. Thank you, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate that. Good evening, everybody. If we can get the presentation up. Chief Carr, Menefee Police Department, here to talk about the quarterly update. And we'll start with our calls for service. This quarter, we had nine, little over 9,000 calls for service, which was actually a 2% increase compared to same quarter last year. Of that, we pulled in our top five calls for service with welfare checks, follow-ups, public assist, suspicious persons, and residential alarms. What was that? Oh, of the alarms, we had no residential alarms that were actual alarms. Our top five crimes here were aggravated assault, drug and narcotic violations, simple assault, motor vehicle theft, and drug equipment violations. Of that aggravated assault, I want to point out, only 30 of those were domestic violence-related. The other 70 are actually add-ons to drug offenses, people who are fighting our officers and then public fights. And then in the calls for service alarms in general, we had 539 alarms to include residential and commercial, with none of them being actual alarms. And then this year, right now, we are currently tracking 5% less cases, so if we say on track, we're estimated to be about 3,000 cases less than we took last year, which is showing with our trends in downward crime. Arrests by age group, we had 407 total arrests, with 239 of those being 30 to 49 years of age. And our victims by age group, victims are still 30 to 49 years, being the biggest majority there, followed by our 50 to 69-year-olds. Our response times here, we're just tracking a little over than where we want to be at 8:40 in totality, however, from the time that our officer is dispatched to arrival is still six minutes, which is right where we want to be. And then code enforcement, we had 608 cases opened this quarter, issued 253 administrative citations, took down some illegal signs in dealing with junk and trash and graffiti removal. I also want to add in there that we have 417 total weed abatement cases. Of those, we're down to about 60 that are still outstanding and will be dealt with here in the next couple of months. Animal friends of the valley, just so you can see the intake here, 161 strays, cats 130, dog owners, so our own community members have relinquished 50. However, we have adopted 45 cats, adopted 78 dogs. Unfortunately, some have to be returned, so we have 43 returned and 19 cats returned. Our community outreach with Hope and our homeless outreach here, you can see 316 repeat contacts over the last quarter, 516 other services, this is us finding ways to get them reconnected to family, drug rehab, mental health services, anything that's taken to get them off the streets, and we had 41 new contacts. CBAT, which is our behavioral assessment team, has been out there, they've contacted 16 homeless, 12 with mental health history, 11 of them are repeats, and then one was a school-related, so even though it was summertime, this was the closing of the school year, and we had one school-related incident. And then over our community engagement and outreach here, we held our 2024 award ceremony. All of you were in attendance, it was great having you there to see everybody here be so successful. And then here's our high school graduations, as well as Boys and Girl Scouts tours at our facility, Independence Day celebration, coffee with a cop over at Dunkin' Donuts, and then most recently, we had a few promotions. Mia Gutierrez used to be a records tech, she is now our proper evidence tech. Dustin Norwood was promoted from motor officer to patrol sergeant. And with that, I have concluded, any questions?
All right, very good, thank you, Chief, that was really good presentation, council members, Councilman Carwin's first.
Yeah, Chief, are you going to be at the presentation tomorrow? The Crime Prevention Forum?
Yes, we will be holding that with the, some of the business owners at Cherry Hills tomorrow morning.
And I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that as part of this, at the Rancho Family Medical Group building, tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM is a business forum on crime prevention in Sun City Plaza. So I appreciate the department responding to that, because a last meeting or the meeting before, we had a bunch of the business owners come down and tell us about an increased, perceived increase in crime in that area, and we're going to be hearing some of the suggestions of maybe how to abate that a little bit.
Yeah, no, the meeting's intended just to hear them out, hear what their concerns are, what their perceptions are, and then show them what efforts we have, also introduce them to the supervisory team, so we'll have a representative from Hope, from CBAT, from our pop team present, as well as myself and the captain to talk about how we've been engaging in the community, and then what else we can do in that center that they feel we're not touching on.
Can you tell us the status of the substation?
The...
So the substation in Cherry Hills, that's not open for counter service?
It is not, it is not. So it's not even set up for counter service any longer. We've had to expand just our personnel in there for working environment, so what used to be the substation for Riverside County sheriffs, we had to close that lobby during COVID, and then we repurposed it, and currently now it's got workstations, so our patrol officers can go in there, write reports, and still be even faster responding to that area, as well as our traffic team is out of there.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sobek's next.
Yes, thank you. So can I go back to the weed abatement?
Yes.
So how many cases, and then how many are still pending?
So I wanted to clarify, I said 417, I was looking at a different note. I have 112 cases for weed abatement. 67 are still outstanding, they've all been turned in to our abatement company, and they are all scheduled to be abated. So so far, we have completed 45.
And so what's the timeframe that they had the opportunity to take care of their weeds? Was it to be done by...
Yeah, we gave several notices before we actually gave a notice violation, and then finally the notice of abatement, so they had more than 30 days to respond to what we asked for and then get it taken care of. And then beyond that, we served them notice of abatement, they still have the opportunity to do it themselves, if they don't, then they're on schedule to be done, and we'll just...
Can you just remind me, when do the letters go out for weed abatement, and then when is the weeds supposed to be down before the enforcement is, takes place?
So the enforcement, like I said, is 30 days after notice, we start doing our visual checks in April.
April, okay.
And then we'll send out notices, and then we'll do our observations, we'll see who's complied, who hasn't, and then once we're done, we'll give that 30-day grace, and then it goes into abatement.
Okay, okay, great, thank you, because I've been hearing, I've been, I've received a few complaints on weed abatement from some residents, so thank you for that.
We've been getting them in, and we made sure that they're, everything that has come in to our office is on that schedule.
And so another question in regards, when you talked about the Cherry Hill Plaza, do we still have the bicycles? Do our officers still use the bicycles? do we still have the bicycles? Do our officers still use the bicycles?
We do. We have a couple of electric bikes. We also have the, the regular pedal bikes that we use for patrol. Those are all in extra, and yes, during summer months, we're, we're out there utilizing them.
Are they used in the Cherry Hills Plaza?
We use them throughout the city. So they'll go, they'll go down here to Town Center and Cherry Hills as well. Our activity there is, is very consistent. We are present in Cherry Hills often, and as well as our Hope team. So we're, we're in there a lot. And, and really, when you go through there, I've driven through, especially since the last council meeting, I've driven through, you see one or two at a time. We are not seeing the, the 2025 that we did a couple of years ago.
Okay, great news. And it shows by, the data shows that we've become a safer city, right?
Oh, absolutely.
We're in the, we're number 18 in the state of California. But, you know, on your awards, I just want to say, you know, it was wonderful, and congratulations to everyone who received awards. But I just want to say overall to our police department, you know, we're going on year number five now, and we in Menifee back the blue, and I saw that last night at the event that was held, and I'll talk more about that in my council.
All right.
But thank you. Please thank all the officers. They're much appreciated, day in and out.
Will do. They're amazing.
All right, thank you, Chief. We appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
You too.
We do have a public speaker, Francisco Urbina.
Okay. And again, Mr. Urbina, if this is on public comment things, let's save it for that. But if you're addressing Police Department Quarterly Update, you're welcome to speak.
I am addressing that. I just want to say that this new system is, I disagree with it. It's an attempt to quell public participation. Okay, yeah, we had so many outreach to the public or to the homeless, blah, blah, blah. I've been homeless. All they do is nothing but provide lip service. What has the city done to actually get some of those FEMA trainers that were earmarked for Hurricane Katrina out here? You know, that doesn't cut it. Anyway, I want to say we have, the majority of our police officers are very good people. However, there are a few bad apples that I've come into contact with. Mayor Zemra, and tell me, and Mayor Protem, if this is the correct approach, that I should schedule a private closed-door meeting with you and deans, or I apologize. Regarding my personal experiences and this quarterly update thing, you know, a lot of it's nothing but lip service. I'll just say that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on now on our agenda. We're on item 5.3. This is our Fire Department Quarterly Update. You guys, it was about one year ago that we lost our chief, Josh Bischoff, in the line of duty. And if we can just take a few seconds, just a moment of silence, and just keep him in mind and his family in our thoughts, if we could do that. All right, thank you. There's been many times when Chief Bischoff would come before us, as Mr. Scoville is going to do. And so I want to welcome you, sir. Thank you for being here to give us an update, and thank you, everybody, for that moment of silence for Chief Bischoff.
I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, City Council, members of the public. My name is Mark Scoville. I am your Menifee City Fire Chief. Today's presentation will be a quarterly update for the activities and events that transpired through the last quarter. I'm a little late. My daughter did get married, so I had to skip the last one. So here we go. And if we can get that presentation up. There we go. Okay, again, second quarter update for your Menifee Fire Department. We had 3,409 calls for service, eight structure fires, 165 traffic collisions, and our response times are still staying below the national average of five minutes at 4.7 minute response times. Our automatic and cooperative fire protection, we did receive or give 22 auto aids. That's between the city of Marietta as well as the city of Canyon Lake. We did receive six assists from the city of Canyon Lake, none from Marietta. We had 346 calls outside of the city of Menifee. That's part of the cooperative, regional cooperative fire agreement. And we had 183 assists received from outside of the city of Menifee. Our Office of the Fire Marshal Division within the Fire Department, they did 269 plan reviews, 67 planning cases, 1,195 inspections. Our inspection turnaround time is averaging three business days. Our plan check turnaround time is averaging 13 business days. That picture right there is of Martin. He is a newly promoted. He went from inspector to one of the supervisors within the OFM. Our EMS division, we, we provide that CPR class, the AED class, the first aid class. We did 142, we trained 142 lifesavers with a, with a total of 30 classes held. We have a public access to fibrillator program that we use monies that are taken from AMR that we get from them. We put it, we infuse it back into the city through the EMS division, and we were able to put six AEDs in the Fire Marshal and EMS vehicles. And Victoria Calvary Chapel did receive an additional AED. Our vial of life forms, we were able to distribute 457 of those. And our public outreach, AED, five AED trainers, adult and infant CPR mannequins donated to the, to the Menifee Fire Department. Yes, the Fire Department does help the police. We do do that. And then 114 sidewalk CPR classes were done on independent, at the Independence Day celebration. Special events slash incidents, on May 6th, I don't know how many of you were caught up in the Encanto Drive shutdown, but that was due to a natural gas leak. We had to shut down Encanto Drive. That, that lasted probably about two to three hours until California Natural Gas was able to take care of that leak. May 14th, we had a stranded hiker. The patient was hoisted out by the Riverside Sheriff's Department's rescue helicopter. They were able to get that patient out. We did have a residential structure fire, and it does show that sprinkler systems do help. That sprinkler system contained the fire to the garage with no extension into the residential part of the home. On June 15th, we had a residential structure fire off of Homestead. It was the Homestead Incident. And on June 21st, we had another stranded hiker, and again, that hiker was hoisted out by the sheriff's helicopter. My safety message to all of you, and Ms. Sobek did, did steal my thunder on this, was about weed abatement. Weed abatement will save your home, and if it was a better picture, you could see that that home was encroached by fire. That's a home in Riverside County that the fire burned right up to their property line and was saved just by having weed abatement. So a little illustration of what, what can happen by having weed abatement. With that, I will open it up to any questions for the council.
All right, thank you, Chief, and I, and I agree with you on that defensible space that just saves a lot of homes. So very good, very good suggestion. All right, Councilman Carwin's first in the queue.
Thanks, Chief. I got two quick questions for you. First of all, there's, on the incident, you mentioned that there were two stranded hikers that were hoisted out. Where were they brought out from? Where were those hikers stranded?
They were stranded off of Simpson, so they have that hiking trail off of Simpson that they get up on the top.
Both from the, about the same location?
About the same location, and both of them were, both had sprained ankles or extremity type of injury.
And then secondarily, I don't know if you have this data memorized, but your slide mentions that there were 346 assists outside of the city of Menifee. Any idea what percentage or number of those were to Paris?
I couldn't even, I can get that broken down for you if that's what you would like for the next quarterly report.
I would love to know, yeah, the assists in and out of the city, from us going outside the city and assists coming into the city. How many of those involve Paris?
Absolutely.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Councilman Estrada is next.
Hey, Chief, I understand you're really busy this time of year, and I just wanted to take the moment to say thank you and all of your partners and all the work they do for our city. We really appreciate the sacrifices you make, sacrificing your lives and, and sacrificing your time, and we're really rooting for you out there, and thank you very much.
I appreciate that, and I'll pass the word. Thank you.
Councilmember Sobek's next.
Thank you, Mayor. Besides the city of Paris, we would sometimes get a breakdown as well going out of our city to the east, and I would like that included as well.
Absolutely.
The assist that we do, so if that's okay.
I took it in totality, but absolutely, I will break it down further to what jurisdictions we are going to, if that is something you guys would like. No problem.
Please, thank you. And, you know, we have a lot of community members here tonight, and I'm not sure how many of them know what a vial of life is. And that's a very important thing, that maybe you can share a little bit more detail what a vial of life is.
Absolutely. So the vial of life is a program that we have. It has a sticker. It's, it's basically a, like a little pencil case that you used to carry to school. And in that pencil case, we have a sticker that you would put on your front door. Your front door would then send vial of life, and the Fire Department would know automatically to go to your refrigerator to see the pertinent information. So a medical history, a list of medications. All of those things are important for us to render the correct care that we need for all that, anybody we come in contact with, especially with our ALS and our interventions that we have. Those interventions can save a life, but they could be reactive with something that you're taking and we don't know about.
So where would they pick up one of those, Chief?
We usually have them in the front lobby, and then we also have them strategically placed throughout the city. I believe we have them at the community center where they can, they have those stacked. And if you would like, I can try and get some this evening, and I'll place them right in the back over here and have them out for everybody.
Thank you. It is a very important item to have in our homes. You never want, know in emergency, even if you have a special needs child to make that, to give that information as well. So thank you for your report. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
All right, Chief Scoville, thank you so much. We appreciate the great update.
Mayor, I have a public commentary. Mr. Francisco Urbina?
This would be on our Fire Department update.
We are very privileged, and I'm honored to have a great police chief. I would like to say that there are some cities that have like a medical bracelet with all the information that can be scanned, whatever. I don't know if something like that might be something that we can look into in the future. And the other thing, just very briefly related, it's probably an agenda item for a future agenda item topic in itself, those electric vehicles. I will never own an all-electric vehicle because of the dangers and electromagnetic radiation. You could get breast cancer, cervical cancer, blah, 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 over time. And Tesla, I don't think even provides a fire extinguisher. And how do we deal with those fires that deal, that burn at 4,000, 5,000 degrees? A topic to be discussed at a future workshop, Chief. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Let's now, let's go to item six. This is Agenda Approval or Modifications, Madam Clerk. Do we have any modifications to our agenda this evening?
No modifications.
All right. Councilmembers all in favor of approving our agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, our agenda is approved for tonight. Now we're on item seven. This is Public Comments for Non-Agenda Items. There is a speaker or more, so I'm going to go ahead and read this. This is the time for members of the public to address the council about items that are not listed on the agenda. The Brown Act limits the council's ability to respond to such comments and matters at the time they're made. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, and I'll just add, there's a little clock up there that you can glance at when you're giving your message with a timer from three minutes down. So keep an eye on that if you're speaking. All right, Madam Clerk, if you would call the first speaker.
Daniel Goldbranson.
You'll see it. Once you get started, you'll see it up there. Thank you, and welcome, sir.
Counsel, Mayor, I'm Daniel Goldbranson. I'm from Big Bear Lake. And we have a whopping 5,000 to 6,000 full-time citizens, five square miles. And you know what? Our council building is much more of a palace. You guys aren't charging enough taxes. I don't know. I don't know what's wrong with you guys. I used to come out here in 66. My uncle built the third house in Canyon Lake. It was quite desolate out here then, let me tell you. Part of the reason why I'm here is my friend, Craig Ashcroft, Craft, just called me about a month ago and said there were some issues out here, and he wanted to try to take care of some things. But we laid him to rest about 10 days ago, so now he's up close somewhere. I was friends with him because of our face, because of our family, because of the Constitution. So what I'm bringing is, we have a newspaper up in Big Bear. It's called The Grizzly. They don't publish anything. They're very secretive. And if I find out who on the council in our city is telling them what to print and what not to print, they're going to be in big trouble. So anyway, our editor quit and started a separate newspaper. And then I'm expanding upon it, making exposes on certain items. We have some contract law problems. Our city is a charter city, which seems, that seems to think they can break any other California state law at will. And it's almost mind-boggling, some of the things they are trying to get away with. So if anybody, I'm going to leave a couple out on the back table. This guy's going to be doing it at different cities because there's a need for it. Because it's, the newspapers here, well, I don't know about here specifically, but our paper, they're being told what to say and what not to say. So I suggest one thing is an ethical department. LA City has one because they have more corruption there. They have, you know, 40 million people, 500 square miles. You guys only have 50 square miles, and I don't know how many people, 70,000 now? So anyway, thank you very much for letting me speak. And hopefully I'll be able to see you in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Goldbranson. All right, Madam Clerk, next speaker.
Francisco Urbina.
You know, it's interesting that the previous speaker mentioned charter cities. Sometimes, I mean, everything's a double-edged sword. Charter cities allow more flexibility of a city. If we think that what is dictated by the state doesn't fit us, then maybe Marietta, our sister city, and Menifee should become charter cities if, if that is what it would take to achieve certain things, such as allowing our paramedics to transport people to the hospital and not wait for American medical response. They grease the wheels with millions of dollars in Sacramento. You know how I finally found out the truth? Chief Paxton, I don't know if he's still the Fire Chief in Marietta, but that state law needs to be amended to allow our paramedics, who are typically the first to arrive at an emergency, the right to transport to a hospital. But anyway, I, I also want to say that, you know, how, there needs to be more citizen advisory committees on how our tax dollars are being spent. The last thing I want is to be paying more taxes. Remember that one woman, I saw her at a council meeting in Temecula, that they're going to be pushing to increase the sales tax to fund more transportation improvements? We're already being taxed enough. Where is our money going, you know, before I approve any new taxes? If I have to balance my checkbook, and it's not easy, then, you know, the Riverside County Transportation Commission, Ed Al, needs to do that. There's a lot of smoke and mirrors in Sacramento. And Councilman Carwin, you would make an excellent future governor. Thank you.
I would vote for Bob, too.
Can we give him an extra three minutes, please?
No other speakers.
All right, thank you very much. We are going to move on on our agenda. We're on item eight now. This is Councilmember Updates and Comments, and we'll start with Councilman Carwin.
Thank you. I'm announcing my candidacy for the...
I'm announcing my candidacy for the, no.
Governor?
So, I attended, uh, the Milvet Midday Mixer. I know several of us were there for that. Uh, it was a Chamber of Commerce event down at the Milvet headquarters on our, on our border with Marietta. They serve both cities, excellent organization. It was great to see their new headquarters and see the services that they're providing to our veterans in the community. Um, and just any of our veterans who are looking for services, getting hooked up with, uh, government programs, uh, food pantry, anything that you need, benefits, go see Milvet, they're right in the plaza off of Scott behind the AMPM in there. Um, I attended a Rotary Club meeting, um, yesterday, today, no, on Monday, I attended the WRCOG Executive Committee. Um, Rita Rogers from Paris was elected chair, uh, this year, she'll see serving in that capacity. I would like to note that the finance team at WRCOG was awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the tenth consecutive year. So, our, our funds are well taken care of and, uh, good transparency in reporting there. Um, there was an announcement that the city of Temecula was gonna be getting a TUMF credit of just about thirty-three million dollars to build a, uh, the Western Bypass Bridge, which will connect Rancho California to, uh, Seventy-Nine South, which will create a, a big traffic ease in that area. Um, I wanna now, I wanna reinforce that. I talked to Chief Carr a minute ago. Tomorrow, if you have a business or interest in Cherry Hills Plaza, you wanna hear about crime, what's going on there, what programs we're trying to implement to take care of that, tomorrow morning at nine AM at the Rancho Family Medical Center building upstairs, they have a conference center. Um, and then, since Don Slater sent it in, I'll mention, um, as a part of the Menifee Arts Council, uh, Friday, Friday, Hot August Nights, I will be performing on Saturday night over at the Countryside Marketplace outside of Bushfire Grill, playing some music from seven to nine PM. It's free, come on out, bring a fan, bring a chair. And, um, something, something struck me just, it, as part of my comments section, for our community services department, um, pickleball is really popular with our seniors. It doesn't take a lot of space. The Case Inocero Center, if we had portable pickleball nets, there's actually space in there for two pickleball courts, if we were to clear the tables out. And I know it's a low ceiling, but the older seniors aren't hitting the ball that high or that hard. It might be an activity we could run for them at the Case Inocero Center, just set up a portable net in there, one or two, and let them hit the ball back and forth. Something we don't offer now, it's air-conditioned, it's physical activity, and I don't think it would cost us very much to do it. Just something, if we could look into that, I'd appreciate it as an amenity. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman. Next up is Councilman Estrada.
Carwin Artist of the Year, future governor, maybe President 2048. All right, I have a short report. Um, on June thirty-first, I went to a scoping meeting here at City Hall. There are a lot of new projects coming in on Scott Road, and that was open to the public. And, uh, we, it was mainly going over, uh, the potential environmental impacts of all the projects going on in Scott Road. Um, also, I went to the Sally Basalt Elementary School Ribbon Cutting, and we're opening a brand-new school in Menifee. It's over there, uh, close to Winchester, off of Briggs Road. Um, and, yeah, there was, it was great to see all the positive educators, uh, show up there and talk about all the great things she did for our community. And the other thing I wanted to mention, July seventh, last night, we went to National Night Out. A lot of us, a lot of us council members were there, honoring and supporting our police department. Thank you for your service, thank you for sacrificing your lives. The job you do is not easy, but we appreciate you here in our city. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. Next up is Councilmember Sobek.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to start off by saying, uh, at our last city council meeting, we heard from, uh, a resident in the fifty-five and older neighborhood, talking about waste management and what the state's, uh, doing. The very next day, I attended a CAP meeting, which is Community Action Partnership. I'm a representative for Supervisor Washington on that, and I was able to, um, talk to them about coming out to Menifee and our staff's working on a presentation. We may not be able to do more with waste management, but they offer a lot in utility assistance. They are the ones who offer our cool and warm rooms, the cool in the summer and our warm rooms in the winter, and provide the snacks. They have a, just a array of assistance, and so they will be coming out and making a, making a presentation to our, uh, fifty-five and older communities. Um, I attended, uh, the Rotary Club of Menifee School Supply Donation, which, um, our Rotary Club in the city of Menifee is just a, a wonderful organization that really gives back to the community, and, uh, and, uh, this time of year, collecting the school supplies will help a lot of families. Um, I'd like to share a picture. It's been mentioned about the Milvet, the Menifee Valley Midday Mixer, but the one thing I would like to hi, a couple things highlight is that everyone there is a volunteer. So, if you have a heart for our veterans and our military, they love volunteers, and I found out that day that their director, Raven, who we all know, um, is totally a volunteer. She doesn't take a dime. So, they send out care packages every month, and we've got one coming up, August fourteenth, from five to eight at Fairfield Inn at Town Center. They will be putting together care packages, they're also taking some donated items. This month is chewing gum and wet wipes. So, if you're interested, show up there and help out. Um, and then, um, let's see here, I attended the Fall Festival First Meeting, and everyone's gonna be happy. Last year, we had Sun City Cruisers that were doing trunk-or-treat, and they did a fabulous job, and the community just raved about how wonderful it was to have their classic cars there doing trunk-or-treat. They're gonna be back this, this next, this year, so that's gonna be great. It was mentioned about Sally Basalt Elementary School Ribbon Cutting. What was really, um, heart-touching, that touched our hearts, was hearing from her children. Sally Basalt, um, lost her life way too, way too soon. Not far from where this elementary school was built, um, she was killed in a car accident on Scott Road, um, during her teaching years. And so, hearing from her children and the life that she led, and the type of teacher she was, was just so heartwarming. And so, it's a beautiful, beautiful campus, and, uh, I understand they're already starting on their second phase, that, that's needed there. Um, I attended a NEOP meeting. Um, um, I attended, along with the mayor, a recognition for a young man named Aiden. Aiden is six years old, and he was recognized as a volunteer here in the city of Menifee. And with a, we had a representative from our senator's office and our supervisor's office, and then we, as a city, were able to present him with a certificate. And I wanna thank our, you know, we don't hear a lot about our, um, what department?
City Clerk.
City Clerk's, uh, the City Clerk's Department, and they put together all of these certificates that we give out to the community. I just wanna thank you and your department for that. Um, I attended, uh, the MTG meeting, which, um, I wanna, I wanna go here first, before I go to the National Night Out. So, I attended the MTG meeting, which is, uh, all the, the groups from city of Menifee, even Lake, uh, Lake Elsinore, Marietta, Temecula, we, they come together about every other month. But what we received was, we received a presentation about the two thousand twenty-eight Olympics that is coming to our area for equestrian. And what we learned is that, um, this is gonna be huge, it's gonna put us on the global map. In this area of southwest Riverside County, there's an opportunity for tourism, there's, um, a long-term legacy, and there's opportunities for all kinds of growth. And so, it will be coming in two thousand twenty-eight, put that on your calendar, and, um, that will be July fourteenth through the thirtieth of that year, and then afterwards, they'll have the Paralympics, but it's gonna be exciting for our southwest Riverside region. There will be more to come on that. Our supervisor will be forming a committee of all the cities and, uh, coming together to figure out how we can all participate. So, it was great news. Went to one of our residents who, uh, they're involved with this big play production, they had the play, The Big Fish, they have had it at Liberty, they, this one happened to be in Temecula, but they're bringing it back to Liberty High School, and they'll all be putting on plays in our city about every ninety days. Okay, here's the National Night Out. I just wanted to give kudos to our staff, to our police department, to our fire department, code enforcement, and to all the businesses that came out, the nonprofits. Um, every booth had school supplies for all of the children that came around, and it was a night that our children got to build relationships with our police department and see what, what wonderful men and women they are and how they protect their lives every day. So, um, just kudos, and thank you for everybody for coming out to that. That's all I have.
All right, good report. Uh, Council, uh, Mayor Protem Dynas is next.
Thank you. Um, most of the things I, all the stuff I attended was pretty much mentioned, but I would consider calling National Night Out also Hot August Nights. Um, it's, it's pretty warm out there. Gotta be kinda old under, to appreciate that title, but, uh, I did, in addition to that, today, I attended the RTA Admin and Operations Committee meeting, and that's all I have.
All right, very good. I'm gonna try to be brief here. This is since our last meeting on July seventeenth. On Thursday, the eighteenth, I went to the Neighbor's Monthly Business Mixer in Wildemar. Uh, on Tuesday, the twenty-third, there was a school supply drive at Buffalo Wild Wings that was hosted, uh, by the Chamber, uh, and also our Rotary Club. On Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, Milvet hosted the Chamber Mixer, and I attended that. And also that evening, Pacifica hosted a community mixer, uh, and served some B D A tacos, which was wonderful. And then, on Thursday, the twenty-fifth, our city's Veterans Resource, uh, Activity at the Case Inoceros, I went to go and visit Milvet and give her some support while she was there, and then, uh, walked around a little bit to, and visited with our seniors. I meant to spend about ten minutes with our seniors that were having lunch over there with the family services, and I ended up there for about an hour and a half, 'cause they all wanted to, uh, chat, and so it was great to spend time with our seniors. Uh, and then, there was a Rotary Club meeting, uh, that day, and a young lady named Ms. Kitzaro was, uh, a Youth Leader Academy Ryla, and she was the speaker and gave us some updates on, uh, her experience there. On Tuesday, the thirtieth, um, city planning staff toured our history museum, and I wanted to thank them for taking the time to come and, uh, see what we have there. On Wednesday, the thirty-first, there was a ribbon cutting at Sally Basalt Elementary School. It was just a beautiful campus, very modern design. I was very impressed with it. Uh, and, um, on Thursday, August first, uh, there was a U-Matter Collaborative Meeting, uh, at the Case Inoceros Center that I attended. And also, as Councilmember Sobek, uh, mentioned, we honored Aiden Card- Cardona with his leadership, uh, award as, as a young man, and, uh, it was just great. He was, he accepted that very well. Um, and then Friday, August second, was our Foodie Friday. It was a little bit of a warm night, it was a hot August night, as the Mayor Protem said, but it was a wonderful night, and, and, uh, it cools off. That's the beauty, beauty thing about Menifee is, right around six o'clock, you get that nice breeze, so it wasn't bad. And last night, we experienced that as well. Uh, and then, um, I also attended last night at the National Night Out, uh, and wanted to, uh, just give a little thanks to our, uh, first responders who are willing to get in a duck, dunk tank and, uh, let the kids have some fun. They're all good sports, and so it was just a really nice night for everybody. Um, I have a couple announcements, council members. Um, I, um, wanted to, first of all, just say how pleased we are to welcome our next group of residents that signed up for our Citizens Academy, and I think it starts next Tuesday evening. Anybody here gonna attend that? All right, we do have a couple, so good job, you guys. It's a great way to learn everything about how this city operates. Um, and, and hopefully, our council members will all come, uh, for that first night to kinda welcome and kick off that evening. Um, I'm also looking forward to, next week, on Thursday evening, the fifteenth, is Menifee Night at the Lake Elsinore Storm. I was told that they're looking to have the mayor throw out the first pitch, but I would like it if all of us could do that, and I'm gonna ask if we can. So, if you guys are there, I hope you'll come just a little bit before the six o'clock start, and we'll all come down there and get a chance to throw the first pitch, if you guys are, if...
You better bring a Bengay?
You better bring a Bengay for that, you're gonna throw your arm out. Me, too. Yeah, save a little bit for me. All right, and then, um, I wanted to also share with you, I got a call from our Congressman, Ken Calvert, and he wanted to let us know that, um, he secured another four million dollars, uh, for our Quail Valley Septic to Sewer Project SubArea Four, it's about fourteen hundred lots. Um, and that is on top of the previously secured five million that he got for our SubArea Nine, uh, which has been completed. And he also wanted to share that, um, the federal, that there's federal funding towards our McCall Interchange Project also anticipated. So, um, just a word of appreciation to him, um, he meets with us once a year, and we kinda share some of those needs, uh, that we have with infrastructure, and he listens, and he follows through, and so, we're just very thankful and fortunate to have him representing us. All right, um, RCTC, it was mentioned, Mr. Urbina said that he was concerned about, uh, tax increase. RCTC has decided not to, um, have that on the ballot this year, so it's gone. Uh, but they also wanted to announce that, for us all to watch, for a fake text that we're all getting, uh, talking about how you owe toll money, toll road stuff, it's baloney, don't fall for it. Um, it looks like it's coming from a fast-track agency, and it's not. So, there's your warning. All right, you guys, I, that's all I have. Anybody else have anything else?
I did wanna mention one thing, um, as is my tradition of forgetting at least one thing I attended. Uh, Councilman Estrada, I don't even know if you mentioned, but it was, uh, Shakespeare in the Park.
Oh, yeah.
At Sun City, it, it was so long ago, I forgot, because we only had two, it was five weeks in, in last month, we only had two meetings. Um, so, at the, at the Sun City Civic Association, at the Greek Theater there, they had, uh, Shakespeare in the Park, they put on The Tempest, and it was very well attended, I s, there were a couple hundred people there, and I, I took a small poll, and about half the people put up their hands and said they were from, not Sun City, they were from, uh, the rest of the city. So, the message got out there, and the Civic Association was thrilled that people came and used the theater, and it was a, just a, a fun night for all, so I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Bob.
Great job by our, uh, Community Services Department.
Yeah. All right, with that, we're gonna move on now. We're on item nine, this is approval of the minutes. The minutes from July seventeenth, does anybody have any changes, modifications to those?
Mayor, just wanna note, there is a slight amendment, um, in your red folders on a correction on a vote.
Okay. Uh, with that, as modified, council members all in favor of the modified, uh, minutes from July seventeenth, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, that's approved unanimously. We're now on item ten. This is our consent calendar, and all matters on the calendar are to be approved in one motion unless a council member requests a sp- a separate action on a specific item. If the item's removed, it'll be discussed individually and acted upon separately, unless otherwise directed by a member of the council. The vote on ordinance adoptions will reflect the prior action of each council member when the ador- ordinance was introduced. However, if a council is not present at the meeting, their vote will be reflected as absent. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak on consent calendar items?
No, we do not.
All right, council members, do we have any items that we wanna pull from consent? Go ahead.
Ten point nine.
Ten nine. Estrada, any others? Can I get a, a motion to approve the balance, please?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we'll do our electronic voting. And that passed unanimously. We're gonna go to item ten point nine. Councilman Estrada, this one is, uh, agreement with Hunn and Partners for Placemaking and a Master Plan for Tourism. Did you have a question, comment, or do you wanna staff report?
Yeah, I just had a, a question and a couple comments. Yeah. Um, my first question, I know we're gonna be doing surveys and reaching out to the public and, uh, talking to interest groups and everyone. Now, when we do the surveys, you know, usually, w- we say, oh, there's a, a scientific method behind the sample size. Is there a target sample size that, uh, this group, this, these consulting groups are aiming for?
Hi, good evening, Mayor. Councilwoman Kayla Charters with the Economic Development Department here at the city of Menifee. Um, one of the reasons that the consultant was chosen was because of the extensive community engagement, public outreach that they do. I can't name a specific number, but I can definitely find out for you, but there is multiple ways that they are collecting community engagement, including focus groups, stakeholder interviews, um, putting together a survey that'll be sent out to the community. We'll be partnering with our Communications Department to make sure that that gets out in front of all of the community, um, as well as interviews for our stakeholder groups.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions, I have some comments. Should I go ahead and hop in?
Sure.
Okay. So, uh, ten point nine is about identity and tourism master plan, and here in Menifee, we've added that to our strategic plan, the unique identity, and it's gonna be very important for us. I think it's one of the most, if not the most important question we ask ourselves, you know, what draws residents, um, to our city, uh, within our city and from our neighboring cities, and what is our unique identity? So, I think it's gonna be a very, very important conversation to have, and if you can please let the consultants know, I'll speak for myself, I'd like to see a larger sample size. Usually, when we do these surveys, we get, you know, three hundred, five hundred responses, and I think, now that we're a city of a hundred and twenty thousand, I'd like to see a couple thousand, at least, uh, residents who participated in the survey and gave, uh, substantive free, feedback. We, sometimes we have residents, you know, say, hey, you know, we only had a couple Sometimes we have residents, you know, say, hey, you know, we only had a couple hundred responses, and, and I think, I think we should do this survey justice and have thousands of responses, because when we're talking about our city's unique identity, it's going to be very sentimental, and it's going to be the core of who we are. So if you can please relay that to the consultants. And, oh, last thing I put on my notes, I noticed that the consultant had the outreach planned for 10 weeks, two and a half months, and if you can please relate to the consultant, reaching out to thousands of residents might take a little longer than two and a half months, and I would feel comfortable waiting or extending it out a little bit more, three months, four months, just so we can tell our residents, hey, we did our due diligence, we reached out to you, and we took in your input to who we are and establishing our unique identity. Okay, thank you.
So I believe there's a budget item on this, and I would be hopeful that we don't need to change the budget in order to accommodate that request, and that maybe all of us can help, let's say this is online, we can help direct people to be aware of the survey and be able to encourage everybody to make comments. Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, one more thing. Can you please let the consultant know, if he can, in his evaluation, see if he can find a place where Menifee can have a distinct downtown, where we can all get together, you know, like our neighboring cities, like Temecula, Marietta, et cetera, a distinct place where our economic development core is, and we can give our residents local entertainment.
Yeah, and I'm pretty sure that all of you will have the opportunity to be interviewed as part of the stakeholder engagement, so you'll be able to give all of your ideas and feedback to the consultant as well.
Thank you, Ms. Charters.
Okay. Are you ready to make a motion?
Yep, I'm ready to make a motion to approve, if there's no other discussion.
Yes, ma'am.
I do have a public speaker.
Can I guess?
Yeah. Mr. Francisco Urbina?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I pull back my motion, and I'll let Mr. Urbina speak.
No, no, leave it, it's still, it's still out there.
Councilman Estrada, I completely agree with you. We need to have a larger sample size. I'm proud to be here in Menifee, and the divorce is going to be concluded a lot sooner than you think, and I want to make an offer on Lot 17, that choice knuckle lot in the Liberty tract at Bravardy at Menifee, blah, 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 that will hopefully soon be annexed, and I'd like to offer my consulting services to annex. But anyway, here was the 75th anniversary of Cal Poly Pomona, celebration of excellence, commitment to the future, something along that line, something positive, and maybe, you know, if we, any other Cal Poly Pomona graduates here, maybe we could get special permission if we have resurrect the Pointy Building, future Cal Poly Pomona campus, that I would like to be a part-time professor there. And if it's not too late, but I'll check with the city clerk's office tomorrow, I'd like to be added to that Citizens Academy. If not, I will wait my turn. But our city has a bright future. In my opinion, we have the largest land area and the flattest land area of any city in Southwest Riverside County, and economic development is what's going to pay the bills to increase the staffing in our excellent police department, fire department, et cetera. I want to say that now, I, I had no idea that Romoland was part of the City of Menifee. I was forced to move from group home, but all for the better. I like the area. And last night, I don't know who the police officer was, but I want to give him a kudo about 8:30 at night, as I was trying to negotiate a deal on a '63 Ford Falcon with a 170-in-line special, and they were looking for some guy dressed in black, whatever, and then they called, called in a helicopter. That is one of the reasons Paris is jealous about us, because we got sidewalks in there in an area where, if it had been Paris, nothing would have happened. Thank you, proud to be a Menifeean. God bless Menifee.
Thank you, sir. So I believe we have a motion on the floor.
Yep, I make a motion to approve.
And I'll second that, so we'll go ahead and do our voting. And I see that passed unanimously, so we're going to move now to our first public hearing item. This is 11.1. This is Home to Suites Hotel Appeal, and I believe Mr. Russell Brown, our senior planner, is coming to present the item. Welcome, sir.
IT, if I can get the staff's PowerPoint presentation up, please. All right. Good evening, Mayor, city council members, members of the public. The item before you tonight is the appeal on the Home to Suites Hotel project. A little background on the project, the application was submitted on May 30th of last year. On June 12th of this year, the Planning Commission approved the project. June 21st, we received an appeal application from CARE California, the appellant, and that brings us to tonight's meeting. And so the project site is located on the southern end of the Menifee Town Center Shopping Center, east of Interstate 215, south of Newport Road. The site has some existing partial improvements consisting of a parking lot and some landscape The project is located within the Menifee Village specific plan, and more specifically, Planning Area 2-7, which is subject to the Riverside County Ordinance 348 for the development standards. The SP is a bit dated, as it was originally approved in 1982 as the Salt Creek specific plan. However, several updates to the plan, including a name change, have occurred over the years. A little background on the existing shopping center, the Menifee Town Center was approved in the late 80s, early 90s, and it consisted of 13 parcels, over 27 acres, and the project site is located in the southernmost 2 acres. So the project entitlements consist of a plot plan application for the four-story, 65,000-square-foot hotel, which consists of 106 rooms. The site also contains approximately 17,500 square feet of irrigated landscaped area, and a conditional use permit is required for the increase in height to exceed the minimum 35-foot height limit. I'll go into more detail in a, in a few slides here. However, also, should be noted that when the project was originally submitted, it included variance application for a reduced front yard setback, which was proposed at 12 and a half feet, however, which is half of the minimum 25-foot requirement. However, staff and the applicant worked diligently on a redesign and were able to make the building and the onsite parking landscaping meet those minimum setback requirements, and so therefore the variance application was withdrawn. So the project is an irregular-shaped lot, which, with existing shared access on the northeast corner. The project includes right-in, right-out access near the southern border, and the project includes a total of 106 parking spaces, one parking space per hotel room. 60 of the parking spaces are onsite, and 46 are shared parking with the shopping center to the north. And a parking analysis was completed, and the results indicated that sufficient parking exists and could support the project. I think worst-case scenario, it came back at approximately 35% at max capacity. And so as previously mentioned, the project includes a CUP for the increase in height. Again, the project is part of that Menifee Village specific plan. Per the SP, the maximum height is 35 feet, however, per ordinance, Riverside County Ordinance 348, the height can be increased up to 70 feet with the approval, I'm sorry, 75 feet with the approval of a CUP. The majority of the building is at approximately 48 feet in height. The additional height is for, you know, the architectural appendages and stairways and elevator towers. So this slide shows the maximum allowable height in other comparable zones within the city, and as you can see, the building heights within the EDC, our Economic Development Corridor, range from 45 feet up to 100 feet, while the maximum height in the commercial retail, commercial office, and business park zones is 50 feet. And therefore, had the project been in one of those zones, it likely would not have required the CUP. So again, this is a comparison for hotels approved in the nearby vicinity. The lower right is Home to Suites, two is the Hampton Inn, and three is the Fairfield Inn in Menifee Town Center. Both the Home to Suites location and the Hampton, both fall subject to the Menifee Village specific plan and the same development requirements. A CUP was processed and approved for the Hampton Inn to the north. The building heights for those hotels, as you can see on the screen there, 54 feet, 3 inches for Home to Suites, 52 for the Hampton Inn, and 55 for the Fairfield Inn. So we processed a negative declaration for the project, and the public review period for the ND, I apologize, it's a typo, it's a negative declaration, ND, not MND, but that occurred from May 15th to June 3rd. We did receive comments on June 3rd from CARE California. I'll go into those in a little bit more detail, it won't get super technical. I'll just summarize some of the points that they, they brought up in their June 3rd letter. But staff, as well as the applicant and our SEQA consultants, feel that the ND adequately addresses the concerns that were raised. But essentially, we summarized it into four categories. They had concerns regarding air quality, noise, public infrastructure, and aesthetics. And again, briefly, these are summarized points. CARE brought up concerns with health risks related to the toxic air contaminants caused by construction of the project. You know, the project does comply with California Air Resource Board requirements, as well as South Coast air quality, as well as there are some conditions of approval, applicable citywide, that, that, you know, deal with fugitive dust control. Jumping down the list, they list, there were some concerns with health, health impacts related to the hotel guests. Obviously, SEQA looks at the project's impacts on the environment and not the other way around. And additionally, there was, you know, CARE called out and asked us to use some overly conservative assumptions in the air quality modeling. However, it's not the industry standard, and realistic assumptions and modeling were The second point was noise. They stated that construction noise was not adequately analyzed, and the project exceeds the allowable noise levels. However, the existing noise levels, along with the proposed temporary construction noise levels, fall within the city standards. Public infrastructure improvements, the project could result in significant offsite improvements to the waterline infrastructure. Again, existing infrastructure, we reached out to EMWD. EMWD stated that the existing infrastructure is likely sufficient. However, you know, in the event, when it comes time to do the final engineering for the project, you know, if additional, you know, if the scope increases, obviously so will the, it is possible that the environmental analysis would need to be reevaluated, so. But at this time, we feel confident in, in what's being proposed and what was taken to the Planning Commission for approval. And finally, the fourth point, pardon me, the fourth point was aesthetics. CARE highlighted that project aesthetics were not adequately analyzed, as the 215 is a scenic highway. However, the I-215 is designated as an eligible scenic highway per the general plan, and therefore, you know, the project does not have an impact on existing scenic vistas, and the project does not reduce the overall visual quality of the project area. And so staff's recommendation tonight is to adopt a resolution upholding the Planning Commission's approval of the initial study and negative declaration for the Home to Suites project. And that completes staff's presentation. We do have our SEQA consultant here in the audience, as well as the applicant is available to speak, and they have their representatives as well, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. All right, council members, this is a good time to ask questions of our staff without giving any opinions or discussion yet, but if we have questions for staff, there will be an opportunity for the appellant representative and also the applicant's representative to speak on our agenda coming up, and we can ask them questions as well. But until then, let's direct, any questions that we have from our staff, report from staff?
Mayor, if I could actually make one more comment, I apologize.
Sure, absolutely.
You do have some items in your, in your red folders there. So we did receive a comment letter later this, late this afternoon from CARE. Those comments have not been officially responded to by the city. We did look them over, we did look them over with our SEQA consultant, the applicant and their team looked them over. We feel, you know, our, our initial analysis is still sound, the ND is the adequate document, no initial SEQA analysis is required. And there are some updates, a noise memo that was taken to the Planning Commission, it just didn't make it in your council packet, but that's not new information. And then finally, yesterday, or this morning, last night, we received a comment letter in opposition of the project from the Living Spaces next door. So those are in your, your red folders for consideration.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brown, we appreciate that. Councilmembers, do we have any questions? I did, I do want to ask a question. So when the applicant first came to our staff in a pre-app or original meeting, was it suggested to them that they try to right-size the project and maybe keep it under the specific plan's limits, and maybe just do three stories and not have to have a CUP and things like that? I mean, was that encouraged?
Yeah, so, you know, as staff, we obviously want to, you know, encourage project developers to come in and meet, meet the standards that are in place. And so I think the applicant can probably elaborate on the, the market for hotels and why they needed that fourth floor. As you can tell, the surrounding area, other, other projects were approved at that same height. But yes, they were encouraged to try to meet the, the standards that were in place. Again, we, we were able to get them to meet the setbacks, but height was kind of a, not doable for them, and they can elaborate on that further.
Thank you. And so you had mentioned that, and I believe our, the staff report did say that a reciprocal parking agreement would be in place as part of this approval, but now you're saying, and I haven't looked at it because I'm just now hearing about a letter from Living Spaces, does that confound the ability to do a reciprocal parking agreement?
So there's already an operating lease agreement for the entire shopping center, and I believe within that document, it states that there is reciprocal parking and access throughout the center. So nothing additional is being done. It's already in place.
Thank you. Councilman Carwin, you're in the queue.
Thank you. I'm just going through the letter from Living Spaces right now. There's a comment in here that says, let's see, this is dated August 6, 2024, written by Norton Rose Fulbright LLP. It says that "The existing operation and easement agreement that binds all property owners of the shopping center clearly prohibits any use of the shopping center for lodging." And then there's a quote here from the section 5.1B, looks like 11, of the OEA, saying, "Following uses shall not be permitted, living quarters, sleeping apartments, lodging rooms." So is that accurate? And if so, how was this hotel getting around that?
Well, there, there, there is an agreement in place. Again, I'm not sure, you know, if the city comments or weighs in on those CCNRs or the operating and lease agreements, but I guess staff was, shared the document by Living Spaces. I just...
So this, this property, the Home to Suites, does fall within the geographic region of that agreement?
That is correct.
So it's part of the shopping center definition that's bound by that agreement? So as far as our role goes, it's not our role to determine whether or not they are declined by contract from building it, only whether, if they are allowed by contract, move forward, that the building is appropriate. So this would be some sort of legal action between the shopping center and Home to Suites?
That is correct. This is a private agreement, so our role as the jurisdiction is to look at the zoning and land use that we implement, and a hotel is permitted, similar to some provisions of CCNRs and HOAs. Those are private agreements. Those are private agreements that we wouldn't enforce. We would enforce our local codes that we have jurisdiction over. If there's an issue with a private contract, that would be a separate issue.
Okay, so the Planning Commission's standard in reviewing this does not include whether or not there's a private restriction between the parties to build this. It's whether or not the city would permit it under our specific plan?
Under our jurisdiction, correct.
Okay, so this is not part of our decision-making basis? It's something that they're just advising us of? All right, thank you.
Bob, I'm sorry, I was fumbling around trying to find, what was it that was just...
So part of the Living Spaces letter talks about a lease agreement for the shopping center that actually bars hotels. You can't build a hotel there based on the lease agreement. And Ms. Kitzrow was explaining to us that as the city, it's not our job to determine whether or not the lease agreement permits a hotel, only whether or not our city code permits a hotel. And if they're prevented from building it by a dispute between the property owners, then that's not our decision to make. We're not here saying you can't build a hotel because the CCNRs say you can't build a hotel. We're here to say the city would permit it if there were no CCNRs. If there's a private agreement between the parties, then that's a separate dispute.
Taken up an illegal...
Right, it's here. Councilman Estrada, would you pass it over to the mayor?
I got it, I found it.
Oh, you found it? Okay. So that's what it was. So this is something that is not part of our standard of review because it's not a city ordinance, it's a private dispute?
Understood. Thank you. I just want to make sure I understood what the question and the answer was.
Did I say that right? Okay, good.
It's not in our purview, that topic. Okay. All right, I see no other questions, Mr. Brown, so at this point, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. It is 7:29. Madam Clerk, was this item legally noticed, and do we have any other correspondence in our red folders on this?
This item was legally noticed, no other correspondences.
All right, very good, thank you. At this point, I'm going to ask the appellant representative, I believe it's Aiden Marshall with Adams-Broadwell Joseph Cardozo, on behalf of CARE California, if you'd like to speak. This would be your opportunity. And if you could just confirm for the record, you are Mr. Marshall?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you, welcome.
Happy to be here. Good evening, Honorable City Council Members. My name is Aiden Marshall, speaking on behalf of CARE California. CARE California urges the city to prepare an environmental impact report as required by the California Environmental Quality Act before any further action is taken on this project. This particular project, as you know, is relying on a negative declaration. This is a form of environmental review that can only be relied on in very limited circumstances. Basically, SEQA provides that the city has to prepare an environmental impact report, or an EIR, whenever substantial evidence supports a fair argument that a project may have a significant environmental effect. So in other words, it's only when there's not even a fair argument of a significant impact that you can rely on a negative declaration, as the city is here. CARE California submitted written comments presenting substantial evidence that the project has significant health risk, noise, public utilities, anesthetics impacts. For example, the construction of this project would result in significant health risk impacts to residents just across the street, across an antelope road, by exposing residents to toxic air contaminants in excess of the city's own significance threshold. The cancer risk for the most sensitive populations at these residences is 43.7 in 1 million, which is four times greater than the city's 10 in 1 million threshold. This exceedance is a clear significant impact requiring mitigation, which could include particulate matter filters on construction equipment, which is a common and feasible mitigation measure. But because the city is relying on a negative declaration, currently no mitigation whatsoever is being proposed. The project's construction would also result in significant noise impacts on these same Specifically, analysis of the project's construction noise shows that construction noise levels would be 7 decibels above the existing noise levels at the existing residences, and 16 decibels above the city's 65 decibel noise limit for residential properties. This also exceeds the negative declaration zone 75 decibel threshold. This increase in noise can be readily mitigated with acoustic barriers and other sound dampening measures, but currently, again, no mitigation whatsoever is proposed. You've heard from staff that they have disagreements with our methodology, but our comments are in fact supported by substantial evidence and prepared in accordance with agency guidance. Substantial evidence under SEQA is defined as enough relevant information and reasonable inferences from this information that a fair argument can be made to support a conclusion, and here's the important part, even though other conclusions might also be reached. As such, staff's disagreements regarding methodology don't undermine the substantial evidence in CARE California's reports showing that the project would have significant environmental and public health impacts. In sum, the city cannot approve the project until an EIR is prepared. Thank you very much for your consideration.
All right, thank you, Mr. Marshall. At this time, I'll ask the applicant's legal representative, I believe it's Putnam Prahalad, on behalf of, I'm sorry, of the applicant. So welcome, please restate your name because I think I might have not said it clearly.
Of course, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. My name is Putnam Prahalad, and I am the counsel on behalf of the applicant. As city staff already described, we are seeking approval of a 106-room hotel located on a portion of an underused parking lot in an existing commercial plaza. The entitlements we are seeking are the approval of a plot plan and a conditional use permit for the increased height. As Mr. Brown already mentioned, the conditional use permit is required for the specific plan to go above 35 feet. This hotel is projected to be 54.3 feet, and this is consistent with other hotels that have been approved in the city as far as size. I wanted to kind of explain the SEQA standard here and also to talk about Mr. Marshall's arguments. The appeal of the project was brought today by CARE, who is claiming that the city should prepare an EIR because they believe the proposed project will have a significant impact to the environment. The requirement to prepare an EIR under SEQA is based upon the fair argument test. This test is whether there is substantial evidence to support a fair argument that the project may have a significant impact. Mr. Marshall defined it, substantial evidence means that relevant information and reasonable inferences from the information in front of the agency. But that substantial evidence needs to be credible and relevant, and that's what we believe is lacking here. A negative declaration, which was prepared for this project, is appropriate when there is no substantial evidence in light of the whole record that the project may have a significant effect on the environment. So we do not believe that CARE has provided relevant or credible substantial evidence to support their argument. I'm going to go into a little more detail about each of the, oh, I guess I can, I didn't realize my presentation was up. I think I can go forward, apologize for that. I'm going to go a little bit into detail about each of the four topics that CARE argues that could have a substantial risk to the environment, impact to the environment. First, they allege that the negative declaration failed to disclose health risks from exposure to toxic air contaminants. The only toxic air contaminant that they identified is diesel particulate matter. The heavy equipment and diesel trucks that will be used in the project construction will meet all California Air Resources Board emission standards. Any stationary sources, which the only one they will have is an emergency generator if used, will meet all South Coast Air Quality Management District emission standards. So there are limited toxic air contaminants from the construction of this hotel. A health risk assessment is not really appropriate for this type of construction. The air pollution emission calculations provided by CARE used overly conservative inputs and data, making the conclusions not credible. For example, today, the letter that they submitted today talks about cancer risk. Specifically, it said that the cancer risk for the nearest resident would exceed the South Coast Air Quality Management District's 10 in 1 million cancer risk threshold. Well, South Coast Air Quality Management District only regulates stationary sources, which I mentioned is this emergency generator. So there's no guarantee that it's going to even be used, and if it is used, it'd be used for a very limited time period. So to assume that this cancer risk will occur for the use of an emergency generator is not credible, and that's not credible evidence. So that's an example of conservative inputs used in their emission calculations data. CARE also alleged that the construction will cause exposure to valley fever to the surrounding residents. There's a fungal spore that is known to occur in California areas, called C. imitus, and this property is already disturbed with a parking lot and landscaping. And typically, this fungal spore is found in previously undisturbed property. And so CARE is asking for soil sampling, but the property is already paved and with asphalt, so that's not really realistic. So we don't believe there would be an impact to the surrounding environment for valley fever. CARE also alleges that the negative declaration is flawed because it doesn't analyze the effects of air pollutants from I-215 on hotel guests and workers. And as already mentioned before, SEQA measures impacts to the environment from the proposed project and not the other way around. Also, in today's letter, CARE mentions that the general plan requires a health risk assessment. But if the requirement for the general plan is that health risk assessments are required for residential and residential mixed-use developments, this is a hotel, it is not a residential development, so that requirement does not apply. And so overall, with respect to air quality impacts, we believe that none of the evidence provided is relevant or credible, and it doesn't support an impact to the environment. With respect to noise, CARE alleges that the project would cause significant noise impacts to the environment. In today's comment letter, they cite to a municipal code that has not been adopted by the city of Menifee as far as the noise limits. So that's also something that's not credible. The construction noise limits, the city doesn't actually have an adopted construction noise limit, and typically, when that happens, in an environmental analysis, they look to other jurisdictions to, for examples of what are used for construction noise. Typically, it is 75 decibels. And so the noise analysis that was done for this project found that the ambient noise level is 74. So already, the noise existing today in that area is 74 decibels, and the construction noise expected would be about 73 decibels. So that shows that it's still below the ambient noise level, so there's not an increase in noise level from the hotel. Noise studies do require that you take the combination of both, the ambient noise and the construction noise. That will increase, that does increase it to 2.5 decibels more, which is an increase. However, industry standard for thresholds is that typically, an increase of less than 3 decibels is not audible by the average person. So that is not considered a significant impact, so therefore, there is no impact to the environment from noise from the construction, proposed construction of this project. As far as public utilities, adequate utilities already exist. We do have documents submitted as part of the project that show that the project is going to tap into existing water and sewer. They are not going to have to expand water main or sewer main to support this hotel. So there's already adequate utilities, there's not going to be an impact to the environment from that. And then for aesthetics, CARE alleges that the project may have significant aesthetic impacts to I-215, which is, it's designated as an eligible county scenic highway. Mr. Brown already commented on this. It is eligible, but it is not a state-designated scenic highway. And that particular section of I-215, when you look at the views, it is of an urban environment. There isn't rock outcroppings, there aren't scenic resources, there isn't a vista. So it is, there will be no aesthetic impacts to the environment from this hotel. So I just wanted to quote, that's the SEQA guidelines, 15064-F5, states that evidence that is clearly inaccurate or erroneous, or evidence that is not credible, shall not constitute substantial evidence. So we do not believe that the information that CARE California has provided is relevant and credible to support substantial evidence. I also wanted to go through some of the benefits of this project. This is a Hilton brand hotel, it's a high-end hotel. It will be family-owned. It will create local jobs. It's going to contain a large banquet room event space, which is something that is needed in this city. It also will bring in property tax revenue, and also will bring in occupancy tax to the city for years 1 to 5. It's $1,498,000, and years 6 to 10, $3,613,000. So in summary, Home to Suites is a beneficial project to the city. We do not believe CARE has provided relevant or credible evidence to show an impact to the environment, and a negative declaration is appropriate since there is not a fair argument that substantial evidence was provided to show impacts to the environment warranting the EIR. So we do ask that the appeal be denied. I wanted to address one question that came up with regards to the CCNRs. As city staff said correctly, it is a private agreement, and that section of CCNRs says there's a restriction on lodging. That definition is currently up for debate, and so that is something that the applicant is going to be working with the rest of the shopping center owners to try to work out. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Prahalad. And a quick question for you. So did you meet with CARE California?
I did, actually, and thank you for mentioning that. I did talk to their attorneys, yes, I did.
And was there just no resolution for what their concerns were, what they were hoping to extract maybe in the way of a labor agreement or something along those lines?
They were, they are seeking a labor agreement and some other mitigation for what they believe are environmental impacts, but we were unable to compromise on that.
Thank you. Any other quick, council members, do we have any questions? All right, we appreciate you being here, and please stand by because there may be more coming up. All right, Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak, public comments on this item?
Yes, we do. I have John Sisley followed by Fabio Conti.
All right, welcome, Mr. Sisley.
Hi, how are you? I am John Sisley. I represent the Union Plumbers Pipe Fitters and Refrigeration for San Bernardino Riverside Counties. I'm also a delegate to the Building Trades Commission, State of California. This developer has not sat down to discuss a labor agreement at all. We've tried many times. They won't even entertain a phone call or a meeting or anything about a labor agreement whatsoever. Let's speak some truth. 68, 68 union agreements on private money jobs in the inland empire so far this year by this group in this room. So the notion, the lie being spoken that this is not a prevailing wage project, well, it doesn't have a prevailing wage agreement, and if you deny it until it gets one, that is 100% in your control. The rest of the inland empire has basically said, look, not here, we're not cheap labor, you're not going to do that to our city and our community. If you're going to build here, you're going to do it under a labor agreement. When are you guys going to step up to that plate? The rest of the IE has, and those agreements we have is proof of that. This is a slumlord of a builder who will use whoever they want and pay them whatever they want to build something as cheaply and as quickly as possible done. Is that what you're doing here? Are you filling up space with cheap hotels, or are you building a community? I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sisley. All right, next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Fabio Conti followed by Zach Strasters.
All right, welcome, Mr. Conti.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Fabio Conti. I am the owner of the property where the hotel is going to be built. I'm a five-years resident. First of all, I want to thank you for hosting this, council members, mayor, and everybody in this room for your time. When I moved to Menifee, I had a very good feeling about things happening, developing, and there was a movie theater being built and a bowling alley. There was a lot of activity going on, and all of a sudden, that stopped a little bit. But other than the term, I mean, I wanted to keep going where I wanted to go with my project, I wanted to make it nicer and better, I wanted to see a better town. That piece of land in the back sitting there was not really what I wanted to see. It was a good opportunity to have a great project, and hence, an area that is, there's not really going on there. We don't have much, I'm kind of, I mean, the next downtown area, because that will really bring in a destination, people will have a place to go with some activity. People will have a place to go with some activity. They have a golf course. They have a football game to go, to assist at the college, or some shopping to do. So I think that it's a project that not only is badly needed, because that's the infrastructure that Menifee needs to move forward to become the best of the sister cities around here. You know, we have several cities, but the potential is here. The land, the population. So we need to look forward to build a backbone. And this is definitely something that is badly needed. If Menifee will become the place where people will come for a beer and horse festival, or the cycling event, or whatever we decided to be one day. But we need to start seeing this project coming around in a more regular base. I hope that this will create also an area where people can come out and walk at night, because it kind of ties in a little bit of college with the shopping area and the hotel. You might be able to see some people walking around at night. So to me, it's something that is very exciting, and I urge you to vote yes to the project. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Conti.
Zach Strassers followed by Wayne McDonald.
Welcome, Mr. Strassers. Hey, how are you doing? Good evening, Zach Strassers, CARE California. First of all, thank you. Thank you for taking the time and refereeing this project. I know that you have a big job on your hands, and your citizens depend on you. So we appreciate your time and your attention to detail. I'm not going to take a long time. You have a great wealth of information in front of you, and I'm sure you've done your due diligence. But I do want to key on on a couple of things as it pertains to our comments, and in particular, some things that I think were kind of misconstrued by counsel on the behalf of the applicant. So first and foremost, the argument that the emission calculations are overly conservative. Well, CARE California prides itself on trying to make sure that citizens are taken care of in any city where a project is being built. It doesn't matter if it's Hilton that proposes it. It doesn't matter who it is that proposes it. Our assumption is better safe than sorry. And as an organization, that's what we've stood on. And we look at every project on a case-by-case basis, not based on the developer. We look at the project. This project is nearly 20 feet over how tall the standard is for this area. And this project is well within the distance to the 215 that any residential project is supposed to be. And it's called Home Two Suites. So it'd be disingenuous to assume that there won't be some people that will stay a little bit longer than a night or two. It's written into the name of the project. Another point that I want to bring to light is that a negative declaration and an EIR in this case may or may not really yield too many more mitigation measures. One of them would be tier-four controls on the engine. So yes, it may cost the developer a little bit more money, but ultimately, the result may not actually be that expensive to the developer. But as counsel had mentioned, it's speculative as to how much one of the diesels would run. We don't know. She admitted that. So to have a tier-four regulator on that is actually not that costly, but the amount of impact that it could have on local neighbors could be significant. The noise level, counsel herself once again mentioned that even if the city was to adopt the same standards as nearby neighbors, that this project would be in excess. So by her own omission, what she is saying essentially is that if we in Menifee held ourselves to the same standards as Murrieta held ourselves to the same standards as Temecula, you know what we would do? If we had an EIR, we would say that this was in excess of the noise level thresholds. And what the resolution may be, may not be that difficult. It may simply be a noise barrier. But until they do the due diligence, which a developer, the stature and size of the company of Hilton probably would not be too far remissed, and would still, I'm sure, continue to provide a beautiful project to the area. Finally, I just want to basically end on this. The city itself, in the presentation that was given, admitted that there probably need to be some further studies done with regards to public utilities infrastructure.
Mr. Strassers, your time is up.
Thank you. Have a good night. God bless you.
Appreciate you coming tonight.
Wayne McDonald followed by Robert Ramos.
Welcome, Mr. McDonald.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Juan Ye McDonald, and I'm here tonight to speak in opposition of the project here before you. This, the development of this project potentially has a significant impact on the health and living quality of the project's neighboring residents. Residents just across Antelope Road would be exposed to DPM, a toxic air contaminant. When exposed, we have a higher chance of getting cancer. Last year, I lost a loved one to cancer, so I know firsthand, as many do, the devastating toll that it takes on a family. And so today, you have an opportunity to set the standard and demand an EIR that more thoroughly evaluates the health of, the health rise to the project's neighbor. Please deny this project until an EIR is conducted. Thank you. God bless.
All right, thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Robert Ramos followed by Carlos Esquera.
Welcome, Mr. Ramos.
Good evening. My name is Robert Ramos. I'm a representative of the ironworkers Local 416. Every project that is brought forth in front of you is an opportunity to strengthen, strengthen the middle class of Menifee. It is a chance for the working family and their children to, it's a chance for the working class and their children. And to send a message to your constituents that you care about the needs of their economic mobility. I want to pause there for a little bit and hit some bullet points. So we talk about skilled and trained, right? I heard the attorney say high-end hotel, right? Skilled and trained, and I'm going to start there. Skilled and trained, most of our trades here have an apprenticeship program that is three to five years, right? That's a skilled and trained workforce. That's what the city of Menifee should be striving for, a skilled and trained workforce building this. Second, local hire. Wouldn't you watch your residents spending their money here in the city of Menifee? Right? These are the questions I'm asking. Fourth, the families deserve the rights, not to, the right to, not to travel to LA, but work in their backyard. Right? These are the points I wanted to hit. So this developer has failed to make a commitment to use responsible contractors. They just said it's a high-end hotel. Why cut the corners on building this high-end hotel? Let's get the skilled and trained workforce out there. And let's, let's make them, make a commitment to hire, the local hire. So tonight, I ask for a no vote on this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos.
Carlos Esquera followed by Justin Muir.
Welcome, Mr. Esquera.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Carlos Esquera. I am here to speak in opposition to the Home Two Suites project. This project has the potential to impact many lives, but the developer is providing no significant community benefits. They are banking on you approving this project tonight simply because we don't want to lose the upscale hotel business to Temecula. So they are going to ask you to cut corners tonight. They are going to ask you to approve an ND instead of an EIR. They are going to tell you not to worry about the local residents' health and that everything will be fine. They are going to ask you to ignore local hire and livable wages during the construction of the project. The developer has already spent a significant amount of money to get the project to this point. The best thing for our city is to require them to include an EIR, local hire, and prevailing wages for, as the conditions of approval for this project. Until then, we ask that you continue this project until all the community's needs are met. Thank you, and God bless you.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Esquera.
Justin Muir followed by Francisco Urbina.
Welcome, Mr. Muir.
And counsel, I'm not a speaker. I, I just got off work. I'm here on behalf of the Local 433 Ironworkers. We, we're here today to oppose the project and, I'm sorry, and ask that you oppose it as well. Basically, we, we do things, we're trained for these things. Like, we go to school for years to know how to do these things. And when we do them, we do them under budget. We do them within the schedule. And, and, and union labor is safe labor. It's, it's, you don't have, accidents are very minimal. And like, these are all Americans. You know what I mean? Like, these, these are, these are the middle class right here. Like, help keep the middle class alive. Like, I, 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 that's all I need. I'm happy being middle class. Like, I don't, I don't need too much, but I have what I need. And it's, it's for projects like this. Like, I, I live here. You know what I mean? Like, it would be so nice not to have to go 50 miles to a job site and, and, and build something in my community. So I could drive by and tell my kids, like, hey, look at this. Dad built that. We're skilled labor. We're, we're safe labor. We're, we're local labor. I mean, I, I, I hope that you would, how would you guys go union on this? Like, you guys can have a bunch of people from somewhere else come in here, and, and they, they might not know what they're doing. Like, we, we're trained to do this. This is what we do. I, I, I hope that you oppose this project. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
All right, we appreciate you coming, Mr. Muir. Next speaker is Mr. Urbina.
Yes, followed by Brian Saltikov.
Francisco J. Urbina, the Romulan part of the beautiful city of Menifee. I have over 33 years' experience having worked for three counties, five cities, bachelor of science, California State Polytechnic University with honors, 1984 class, master in city planning, MIT, June 2, 1986. Let me tell you, the opposition here has nothing but crocodile tears, false concerns. Reminds me of two projects that I worked on with a mitigated negative declaration where we cut a bunch of needless SECA red tape. You're not really concerned. This is an out-of-town attorney. It reminds me of the Indio Audemars, the hollow concerns by the city of La Quinta, who wanted to steal all of Indio's auto dealers, the Jerusalem cricket. Give me a doggone break. You, that attorney in that light blue tie like President Obama, you're nothing but a hired legal prostitute for hire. That's my First Amendment, constitutional right, freedom of speech. Now, I don't think the city should be involved in labor disputes. That's overstepping. That's micromanaging. I am pro-union. I was the assistant union staff steward for, in the city of Indio, middle of management, Team Service Local 911, Arlene Madrasini. And, but anyway, this is a good project. Frankly, if it were me, I'd make it seven stories. As long as the windows aren't going to be facing the, you know, directly, you know, inviting peeping toms or something into those single-family residents. This is more business-for-living spaces. Why are they wasting their money on this out-of-town attorney? He doesn't live in Menifee. He doesn't have vested interests. Anyway, approve the project. It was an excellent presentation by our excellent, experienced senior planner, and I'm glad that Ms. Cheryl came to his rescue. Thank you, and God bless Menifee. And we don't need outsiders telling us what to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Urbina. And then, what was the last one?
Brian Saltikov. I apologize if I butchered that.
And if you'd just go ahead and state your name for the record so we can make sure we're saying it right.
Is this a button work?
Yeah, there is an up button.
Sorry. Yes, my name is Brian Saltikov. I'm with Living Spaces Furniture. We're on the parcel next door. You got the opportunity to see the letter we sent out yesterday. This dispute kind of goes back at least to the beginning of this year, where they, the developer had asked for permission to use our parking spots in the back of the building there. If you recall the site plan, you'll see how our tract butts upright up against theirs. The back of our lot, there's a lot of employee parking out there. But the main concern is in the OEA, that operating easement agreement. And it explained pretty clearly it's not in the city's purview to make decisions on that. But we made it perfectly clear to the developer that that use, that lodging use is not allowed under that agreement. So I'm not asking you to make a decision based on that. I just want it to be in the public record that Living Spaces opposes the project. I don't see, the last commenter said how a hotel would benefit Living Spaces. Maybe that the hotel might buy furniture from there. I don't know. But it's mainly, like you said, the private matter between the two parties in the OEA, and we oppose the project. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Saltikov.
No further speakers.
No further speakers. All right, thank you. We appreciate everybody coming and taking their time tonight to share concerns and comments and encouragement. Let's now ask council members, do we have any questions that we'd like to ask either the applicant or the appellant? Councilman Carwin?
Yeah, I have a question for the appellant.
All right, so if we could have Ms. Marshall, Mr. Marshall, I'm sorry, come forward, please.
Thank you.
How are you?
Very well, thank you. Can you point to me anything in the app, in the, the appeal that is new evidence from the Planning Commission presentation? I'm not talking about like restatement of arguments. You're an attorney, you know what I'm talking about. So is there anything substantially new in the appeal that was not presented to the Planning Commission for their consideration?
The main thing is a response to the, a response to comments prepared by staff in advance of the Planning Commission hearing. As you might be aware, the Planning Commission hearing received a report from staff shortly before or at some point during the hearing. It's not quite clear. So in advance of this hearing, we prepared responses to that, elaborating on our claims, rejecting the erroneous arguments made by staff and the, the applicant's consultants.
Okay, but there's no new studies or evidence or anything, or, or reports as part of the appeal?
We engaged a noise expert to expand on our initial noise issues. As you know, in our first comments before the Planning Commission, we were discussing how the applicant underestimated the, the noise from construction equipment by relying on these, excuse me, equipment reference noise levels from the, the UK, which are inapplicable and drastically underestimate the impacts. We engaged a noise expert who explains that use of the FTA, which is the appropriate regulatory bodies' source reference levels, is appropriate at a minimum. It's supported by substantial evidence. That was not before the Planning Commission back in June. And yeah, it shows that there's a significant impact that has not been analyzed or mitigated in this document.
All right, that was what I was talking about. So that, that noise expert report was not presented to Planning Commission. That's new in this appeal.
Exactly.
All right. Anything else that's new in this appeal that wasn't presented to Planning Commission?
In the response to comments, the Planning, or, excuse me, the, the city made a lot of allegations about the quality of the health risk analysis. We re-engaged our expert toxicologist who prepared the HRA to provide more background on the assumptions that are underlying the HRA.
Sure, but that's the same, that's the same argument, the same data that's being used.
Yeah, those were the main arguments. We didn't expand the scope of the arguments, just honed in on the currently identified significant impacts.
Okay, and the, your, your client has not gone out and done any current air testing, noise level testing, things like that at the site?
We're mostly relying on the city's own data just to reduce any
Right.
... chance for disagreement.
Okay. That's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council members, any other questions?
I did have one for our city attorney.
Good, let's do it.
Mr. Melchior, what is our authority as it pertains to compelling the use of prevailing wage, union labor, local labor, et cetera, et cetera, in a contract? Do we have any authority to compel that in our decision-making?
Not in connection with the agenda item that's before you tonight.
So we don't have the authority to say, you must do prevailing wage So we don't have the authority to say, you must do prevailing wage, you, you must use local, union, locally? We don't have the authority even to order that?
No, that's not part of the scope of either the underlying land use decision or the evaluation of the environmental impacts of the project. And those are the two items that are before you in connection with this appeal.
Thank you.
All right. So, uh, I'm going to ask Mr. Marshall, if you'd like, uh, this would be one last because we did hear from the public, and if you wanted to rebut any comments from anybody, this is your final opportunity before I close the public hearing.
Uh, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. Let me pull up my notes here. Um, I'm going to address some of the responses from applicant's counsel. Uh, the first set of responses were in regards to our health risk analysis. Uh, I believe counsel first argued that there will not be a significant health risk impact because all construction equipment will meet, uh, Air Resource Control Board emissions standards. Uh, this response is a red herring because, just because, um, the individual pieces of construction equipment will meet standards, it doesn't reflect that all of them in conjunction will result in a significant impact. The health risk analysis we prepared demonstrates that throughout the construction, uh, period, the cumulative impacts from all the construction equipment used will result in significant health risk impacts. Uh, these are readily mitigated, uh, by use of Tier IV, Tier III, II, III interim, lots of, uh, higher-tier construction equipment is available to reduce this significant impact. Uh, counsel also argued that a health risk analysis is not appropriate for this type of project. Uh, OWEHA, which is the, uh, state agency that governs preparation of health risk assessments, uh, explicitly states that development projects lasting, where the construction lasts more than two months may be subject to a, uh, health risk analysis. This isn't like a binding legal requirement, but, uh, this does combine with SEQA where when you do prepare a health risk analysis, uh, for a project of this size and it demonstrates a, a significant impact, that constitutes substantial evidence. So in some, preparation of an HRA for this type of project is in accordance with state guidance. Um, counsel also conflated, uh, analysis of emergency generator emissions. These were not included in our construction health risk assessment. Uh, that's, uh, an operational health risk assessment, which we did not prepare for this project, so that's also a, a red herring. Um, regarding hotel guest, um, health risk impacts, that's, uh, the health risk due to exposure to freeway emissions. Um, they're suggesting that SEQA does not require, um, analysis of impacts resulting from environment on residents in the project. Uh, they do note that the city's general plan, uh, however, uh, offers otherwise, there's two sections in the general plan. One, which generally states that any sensitive use should be buffered from the freeway. And two, there's a, a measure, a mitigation measure, a binding mitigation measure in the general plan EIR, which provides that any residential project needs to have an HRA before it can be approved. This project is very similar to a residential project. It's clearly not 100% residential because some guests will be staying short-term, but in our initial comments to the planning commission, we demonstrated that people live in these, uh, extended-stay hotels for years. Some of them will stay for a night, some for a week, some for months. Uh, we, uh, included one example in a court case against, uh, a, a similar brand called Extended Stay, uh, in which someone was staying for five years. And, uh, this, uh, style of living arrangement is becoming more and more common, uh, due to the, uh, increased, uh, cost of housing. Uh, brands like Home Two Suites, uh, Extended Stay, uh, offer reduced rates for long-term lodgers. Uh, and in some, even if you're not staying for years, you might have a significant health risk impact, um, by being so close to freeway. And this is a significant impact recognized in the general plan. Uh, there's a lot of significant evidence, uh, that we link to in our comments in the general plan suggesting that, uh, people's cancer risk, non-cancer health risk, uh, rises dramatically when you live even for, not quite a term of years, but for a, a long time next to the highway. So we believe that these general plan policies, uh, definitely support the preparation of an HRA or at least consideration of health risk impacts for the folks who will be living and working at the site. Um, I'd like to turn to noise. Uh, the first argument was that construction noise would be below, uh, the current ambient noise levels. Uh, this is based on underestimated construction noise reference, uh, uh, levels, uh, as I alluded to earlier in my, uh, previous responses. Uh, if you use the Federal Transit Administration's Equipment Noise Level References, or, uh, Reference Noise Levels, uh, you'll see that the construction noise greatly exceeds the 74 decibel threshold, resulting in a, a clear exceedance. It's one of these situations where if the city was relying on EIR, we might be required to defer to their use of, uh, it's called DIRFA. It's a UK, uh, United Kingdom-based, um, re, uh, Equipment Noise Level Database. But since the city is relying on a negative declaration, uh, substantial evidence is the key, uh, factor here. And substantial evidence does support, uh, reliance on FTA noise levels, which do demonstrate a significant impact. As such, uh, councils claim that the increase would only be 2.5 decibels is erroneous, uh, significant, uh, excuse me, uh, substantial evidence demonstrates that the increase would be at least seven decibels, which is far above the five decibel or three decibel significant threshold commonly used for this type of, of impact. I'm just gonna, I don't want to bore you guys, so I'm just gonna hurry up to, uh, utilities. Uh, they're suggesting that, uh, they've provided analysis showing that the, uh, current water mains would be enough to provide the adequate fire flow, uh, required for this project. I'd like to make clear, there's no evidence in the record that this is the case, and I believe, uh, someone from city staff has indirectly acknowledged that. And, uh, I'm available for further questions if, uh, you'd like me to expand on any of these.
All right. Mr. Marshall, thank you very much. We appreciate that final rebuttal.
Thank you.
And just as we gave, uh, the appellant the opportunity, we're gonna also give the applicant, Ms. Proholid, uh, the opportunity for any final comments or rebuttal as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. After that, we will close the public hearing, and we will have a discussion among ourselves and take a vote, but...
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. Um, I just wanted to note a few things that were also misconstrued from my comments. Um, the, uh, the noise impacts, first of all, I want to acknowledge that, uh, the applicant did rely on, uh, these DIRFA-type, um, standards, I guess, or measurements. But what CARE California's, uh, documents relied on was the FTA, which is, um, they, in those documents, they refer to construction equipment, uh, measured in projects from the 1970s, and, um, those types, a lot of those types of equipments are not even allowed in California, so that, the reliance on that document is not appropriate and not relevant. Um, as far as the, um, comment about, um, whether a health risk assessment is needed according to the city's general plan, it is true that the general plan requires, uh, buffering, and this hotel will have fixed windows, so as far as air quality impacts from I-215 to hotel residents, it also will have air filtration that's required under the, the California Building Code. So there are things put into place to help, uh, prevent, uh, any kind of, uh, impacts from air pollution to hotel residents. Um, also, the contention that people will live in this hotel for years, I guess there's always that possibility, but the reality is, is that most people stay a few nights, most do not stay more than, you know, a week. So the, that is speculative to say that, yes, it is an extended stay, but that doesn't necessarily mean that's what the market shows. Um, back to the public utilities, uh, the documents that are submitted as part of the application for this project and as part of the, uh, review by engineering of the city show that the city, uh, that this hotel is planning to connect directly to existing water mains. There is no, there is no proposal or no need to expand upon it. So there would be no impacts to the environment from, um, public utilities, uh, expansion or relocation. So I believe that addresses most of the comments they had. Um, I think, um, I think that covers it. So thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Proholid. All right. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. It is 8:16. Uh, council members, it's behind the rail now. It's up for us to discuss up here on the dais. If anyone would like to go first, uh, feel free. All right. I don't see anybody in the queue, so I'll go ahead and start, and I'll say, um, you know, the, I, I think that our, uh, planning commission got it right. Um, I look at a previously approved, uh, hotel next to, um, the Fit, uh, LA Fitness, and, um, that was kind of the precedent was set at that time. It's also within the same specific plan and the same CUP was offered at that time or granted. Um, but I would have preferred that this applicant would have right-sized this project. This is just my personal opinion, and we're not being asked for my opinion, but I'm gonna tell you, I think a three-story, 70-room hotel would have fit perfectly. It would not have required CUPs and, and special, um, situations for parking and all of that. It wouldn't have upset any neighbors. It would have been a perfect hotel. But I understand that when the planning commissioners, uh, had this in front of them, they asked the applicant, why didn't you just do three stories? And the answer was, it doesn't pencil. In other words, it doesn't maximize our profits. And, and, um, I kind of sometimes say, well, you know, do it right. You know what I mean? You're still gonna make a profit. It's hard for us. We'd have to see pro formas and all kind of studies. I see hotels that are two stories that are in Menifee right now that are still existing and doing just fine. So to say it doesn't pencil, it's hard for me to swallow that, but that was, that's what was said to the planning commissioner. So, like I said, my preference would have been for it to be right-sized. However, um, hearing all of, uh, the testimony and the concerns and the thoughts, um, I believe that staff is correct with their, uh, recommendation to uphold the planning commission's approval and, uh, to deny the appeal. So that's my thoughts at this point, but I'd really like to hear from my colleagues, and I see Councilman Carwin's in the queue, so floor's yours, sir.
Thank you. So I, I do think the planning commission did a thorough hearing on this. There is a considerable amount of evidence that was submitted to them, and it was a, it, it's, it's been a bone of contention throughout the city, the, the hotel, the, the size of the hotel, that kind of thing. Um, the, the concerns raised by the appellant, I feel like if we adhered to all of those concerns, no hotels would get built anywhere near freeways in California. It would be impossible to build based on those standards. And the amount of hotels that currently exist on freeways, that's kind of a prime location for building hotels. So I think that's great. I do hope that if this project ends up getting approved, that the, uh, the, uh, communication can continue between the, the labor organizations and the developer. I would encourage them to do that. Um, I want to make sure that the, the labor members who are here know that we're not ignoring their, uh, their requests, it's just not in our authority on this to make that decision. Um, but I do hope that that conversation continues because I do like to see local, uh, skilled workers working on those projects. Um, I'm not, I'm not persuaded by the arguments raised by, uh, CARE California. I think that the, 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 our, our planning department got it right. I agree with the mayor on that, and I think the planning commission did a very thorough job on there. I don't see any compelling differences in the appeal. I understand I asked about the new, new information, and that was there, but it was more just a reinforcement of the same arguments, um, with hired experts. So I'm, I'm persuaded that the planning commission got it right. It was, it was 5-0 at the planning commission, wasn't it? Yeah. So, um, I would stand by that, and I would, I would be in favor of approving the project.
Thank you, uh, councilman. Uh, next up is Councilman Estrada.
Yeah, thank you. I believe staff addressed all the health concerns, and they did their due diligence, and our planning commission did the due diligence. You know, earlier in the meeting, we pulled item 10.9, and we talked about our identity and tourism and what we can offer our residents and how we can accommodate them. And one day, we are going to need hotels once we have our downtown, and once we have our core, and once we have our economic development, and we have a, we have a place for our residents to go and have dining and give them a reason to come to our city. We want them to stay in our city. So, you know, I think, you know, and this will bring a lot of, this will bring triple t- t- tax to our city. You know, there's a sales tax, there's a, uh, occupancy tax, there's a property tax. This could bring us a lot of revenue to, uh, give the public services and the, and the safety and hire more police, hire the fire department to, uh, adequately protect our city. So that's another benefit. I do want to let the applicant know, you know, I would encourage you just to have an open-door policy. Um, we had one represent, uh, representative come up, um, or a couple, I'm sorry, from the, the plumbers and the, the ironworkers, say, hey, we, we haven't even gotten a phone call. And I just asked the appellant to have an open-door policy, at least give them a phone call, have a cup, a cup of coffee with them, because we do want to build a, a community. We want our local workforce to have opportunities here in our city that are skilled, invested in their education, and this hotel is gonna make millions of dollars going forward, and millions of dollars long after we're gone. And to make a one-time investment to invest in our local workforce would go a long way to building our community. So I just ask that you have an open-door policy with them. And ultimately, I support the project because it'll help with our economic development, and down the road, it will help with establishing our unique identity.
Thank you, councilman. Um, Councilmember Sobek's next.
Thank you, mayor. Um, so, uh, we have a great planning commission, and they thoroughly vetted this project, and I, I just, uh, grateful for them and, uh, the thorough work that they did on this. I also want to thank all of those who came and gave comments tonight, spent your time here with us this evening. Um, some things were said already that I was thinking about, and, um, you know, local workforce is, is wonderful if you can work local. Um, my husband was a union tradesman and, uh, drove all over Southern California, so I understand you with that quality of life. But that is a conversation that's out of our hands, and, uh, as had been said earlier, just, uh, I, I hope that there is a conversation between, uh, the developer of Home Two Suites and the trade. And so, um, I am going to uphold our planning commission's decision. That's what they're for, and they did a great job. So that's my comments tonight.
Okay. Did you want to share anything, Mayor Protem?
Well, I didn't want to be the only left out of the party.
Why don't you make a motion?
Yeah. Oh, yes, I would agree with that. I, I do think that, uh, equality building starts from the foundation up, and so I do hope that, uh, there'll be that conversation with the developer. Um, but I, I agree with what's been said. I can't add anything new to it, so, uh, I will just make the motion that, uh...
The staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution upholding the planning commission's approval and to deny the appeal.
I was just gonna say that.
Okay. All right. Madam Clerk, we have a motion in a second. I see that passed unanimously, um, and so we're gonna go ahead and move now to our next agenda item. If folks want to go ahead and leave, we might just wait for a minute or two, give you a chance. Thanks, guys. Appreciate you all being here. I think we're ready to move on. We're on item 11.2 now. This is, uh, a street name change, and I will go ahead and ask, uh, Ms. Kitzro, our Community Development Director, to the podium to present the item.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to introduce Craig Carlson, our building official. He'll be taking the lead on this presentation this evening.
All right. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Carlson.
Good evening, council and guests. Uh, this evening, I am here to present to you item Agenda 11.2, which is the SQ Squaw Valley Street Name Change. Uh, in November 19th, 2021, the Secretary of the Interior issued Secretary Order 3404 declaring SQ to be derogatory and mandating its removal from geographic features. The word's origin and historic usage vary, and as although many say the word originated as a generalized term for Native American women, others, including countless Native American tribes, say the term is demoralizing and denigrates Indigenous women. While SQ may have started out as a non-offensive generic term, a great many Native Americans take offense to its usage. On September 23rd, 2021... On September 23rd, 2022, AB 2022 was signed into California law, mandating the removal of this derogatory term from all California geographic features and place names. In the fall of '22, the California Committee on Geographic Names Kagan to coordinate the statewide implementation of AB 2022. The city provided a timeline for this process. January, we were informed by the state. February, we attended a online Zoom meeting for best-practice implementation for the webinar. From March to May of 2024, we were in tribal consultations. I might add, this was with 14 tribes that we had consultations with. In May of 2024, the proposal of the name change to Sun Valley Drive. June of 2024, we had a public engagement workshop. This occurred on July, excuse me, June 27th. We had residents there attend the meeting. In August, between August and October, the council is to go ahead and make that determination of the name change checklist, which is due to Kagan. Between September and October, we're to go ahead and review and approve the name change. By December 31st, the state would like us to have the street name change approved. On the map, you will see the number, there are approximately, excuse me, there are exactly 35 lots, homes, that currently exist on the street where we are proposing the name change. What name will replace SQ Valley Drive, and how was the name determined? In coordination with Kagan, the city of Menifee has consulted with local California tribes to determine a replacement name. Both the Pechanga and the Soboba tribes deferred to the city to implement a respectful name that is reflective of the surrounding features and places. City staff researched the surrounding community and found that street names nearest to SQ Valley Drive reflected ski resorts. To continue that theme, and in recognition of many of the community's greatest resources, the city of Menifee selected Sun Valley Drive as the proposed replacement name. Staff recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the street name change from Squaw Valley Drive to Sun Valley Drive as required by Assembly Bill 2022. I am here to answer or address any questions that you folks may have concerning the name change.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Councilmembers, any questions? Hearing none, I'm going to open the public hearing. It's 8:30, and Madam Clerk, was this legally noticed, and do we have any correspondence on the item?
This was legally noticed, and the council did receive correspondence in the red folders.
Right, in our folder. And then, Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak from the public on this item?
I do have one. Howard Wamsley.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Wamsley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council, Mr. Mayor, former, or a future governor, right? Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm Howard Wamsley. I live on Squaw Valley Drive, resident here. I'm here to express my strong opposition to propose street name to Sun Valley Drive. While I understand there's a need to make a change due to the outdated and offensive connotations of the name, the proposed alternative Sun Valley Drive is not suitable for our community. Our street was originally named after Squaw Valley Resort in Squaw Valley, California, a place of beauty, history, and prestige. This is a place where the world came to partake in the 1960 Winter Olympics, an Olympic Games that earned the U.S. three gold, four silver, and three bronze medals. This is where Penny Pitou won two silver medals in the alpine skiing, and David Jenkins won gold in the men's individual figure skating. In 2021, Squaw Valley Resort changed its name to Palisades Tahoe in response to AB 2022, which was passed in September of 2020. The valley in which it's located changed its name from Squaw Valley to Olympic Valley back in 1960 to honor the Olympics. So, renaming our street Olympic Valley Drive would honor the legacy and the heritage of the original namesake, reflecting a place of renowned nature, beauty, world-class skiing. This is a change that would be in line with our community's values, history, providing a name that would, we could all be proud of. So, on the other hand, the proposed name Sun Valley, although aligned with the theme of ski resorts as our neighborhood is from around the U.S., it's a departure from the historical significance of our original street name. Some may recognize Squaw Valley as a ski resort in Idaho, but many Southern Californians, when this first came up, are reminded of Sun Valley, an unfavorable neighborhood in the Los Angeles area. So, many on my street have talked about the connotation that that brings with it by naming it Sun Valley. So, our community deserves a name that reflects our pride, our heritage, and our positive aspirations. Olympic Valley would drive, Olympic Valley Drive would be a name that connects to our history, celebrates connection to a renowned resort, the Olympic Games of 1960, and avoids negative connotations. So in conclusion, I urge the city council to reconsider proposed name and instead adopt Olympic Valley Drive. As the new name of our street, this change would preserve the integrity, the community, the honor, the history, and provide a positive and proud identity for all residents. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wamsley. Madam Clerk, any other speakers?
No other speakers.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. It's 8:33. Councilmembers, any discussion, or can we get a motion? Councilmember Sobek.
Yeah, I'd like to ask staff a question in regards to the comments from Mr. Wamsley. So, would there be a reason why we would need to change our name at Sun Valley? Is there an opportunity to name it Olympic Valley Drive?
It's at the council's discretion. We did introduce the Sun Valley alternative in a community meeting at that time, and said that was what staff has proposed, but it's the council's discretion. As the speakers noted, and in the staff presentation was identified, we did try to keep with the theme of ski resorts, and so that's one of the reasons Sun Valley was chosen.
If we were to decide to hold this item and continue it, and have those two options put out to a vote to that 35 residents, would that be an option?
We are bound by the timeline given in the legislation. We have to submit our application to Kagan or our name choice to Kagan by August 20th. So we are really confined in time. If the council wanted to give staff direction to give both names and let Kagan choose, and then we would come back with a formal street name change later after that approval, it just takes, it just takes the decision-making from here and gives it to Kagan.
Okay, and would the comments that were provided by the resident be included in that option to Kagan? Could they be included of why the resident would want that name, and why the city wants the name they want?
We would, if it was the council's direction, we could put both of them into Kagan and see, you know, this is unprecedented, and we've not done this before with Kagan, so it's a little difficult for me to, you know, give you an answer for sure of how it would be processed.
Well, with the Olympics coming here in 2028, I kind of like that name. So, anyway, I am ready to hear from my rest of my colleagues to see their thoughts.
All right, and Councilman Estrada is in the queue.
Hey, Director Kitsero, when you had the public engagement meeting in June, what was the feedback from the rest of the residents? Any other suggestions, or how was the turnout?
There were three residents that showed up, to be honest, and it was positive. You know, there was no additional feedback. There was lots of questions. Previous to the workshop, we did an FAQ, put out as much information that we had to share with the residents. We were sensitive to the fact that obviously this change is not an easy change for a homeowner to have to deal with, and so we wanted to make it as simple as possible for them. But there was no opposition to the name Sun Valley, and there were no alternatives proposed at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Carwin?
I'm guessing that nobody has championed Sun Valley. Like, nobody's going to riot if we change the name from Sun Valley to something else because they haven't picked that yet, right? Right? Yeah, I'm from New England. If we're going to name it after a ski resort, I'd go with Loon Mountain. I think that's a Loon Mountain Resort in New Hampshire. My one concern about Olympic Valley is that we don't have the Olympics here in Menifee, but they will be in the valley. And since nobody's really, there's no major petitions from the neighborhood. I used to live one street over from there. I'm familiar with this street. People don't really care. So, if we could do something cool and significant, I think that's fine. I mean, we have a resident here who's got a passion about an idea there. I would have no problem making a substitute motion to name it Olympic Valley. It's fun. A lot of people would ask why it's called that, and there would actually be a reason behind it. And then, we look like geniuses when the Olympics show up in '28, and we go, "Oh, that's why we did it that way." So, I would be fine substituting the motion to call it Olympic Valley Drive and getting it off of our list of concerns because we got to change it anyway.
And I think that what Ms. Kitsero said is we could submit both, right?
Carwin Valley Drive?
Is that what you want?
Just floating it out there.
I wish we'd had a little more, because I didn't know about this until it came to our agenda, but I also bought a home there in '89, and one street over, and the neighborhood was called Meadowwood back then. That's what it was, and so that's, there is no Meadowwood Street. Kind of has a nice little historic throwback, but I wasn't involved in the process, so that didn't get put in there. But go ahead, Councilmember Sobek.
You know what? Finding out that there were three residents at your meeting, and then we have one resident come tonight, I think that percentage is pretty good, and so I'm going to make a motion that we go with Olympic Valley Drive.
Can we also put Sun Valley as a backup, just in case? Because you got to compare to the county and make sure we're not duplicating streets and stuff. I don't know what the odds are of Olympic Valley also being out there somewhere else, but we should have a backup just in case that's...
I'm fine with that.
If I can ask the city attorney, maybe we don't do the formal street name change tonight, and we just use this direction...
Submit it.
To submit to Kagan, and we come back once they've approved the name with a formal street name change?
Yes, I think that would be the best process because we don't know whether this name will work. So, yeah, we get the feedback from Kagan. If Kagan says Olympic Valley Drive is a go, we'll come back, rename the street, probably on a consent agenda item.
So, are we submitting both, Olympic Valley with Sun Valley as an alternative?
So, I revise my...
I don't think we need to do a motion. They're taking, they're taking our direction.
Recommendation? Okay, thank you.
Do you want, wait a minute, you do want us to do a resolution?
Yeah, if I could try and state what I think the motion is. The motion is to present Olympic Valley as the primary to Kagan with Sun Valley as the backup to Kagan, and bring back whichever one Kagan accepts for a name change on a future agenda.
So moved.
One second. And can I just ask staff that if something like this comes up in the future, because I wasn't notified either, and that's in my district, knowing that we're going to be going through something like this, I think a council needs to be notified when these kinds of public meetings are being held, so we can be aware that the residents are going through something like this.
Good call. All right, we are going to move on our agenda now. Next, we have some procedural formalities to introduce some ordinances, creating three infrastructure CFDs, and then three more of the same three projects to do three maintenance CFDs. So, please, everybody bear with us. We're going to start with 11.3. This is ordinance introduction formation CFD 24-1 Banner Park 2. Councilmembers, do we wish to hear full staff reports on each one of these, or can we jump right into the public hearing? Everybody's okay with that? All right, let's do that. I'm going to open the public hearing. It's 8:41. Madam Clerk, was this legally noticed?
Yes, it was.
Do we have any public testimony on this item?
No, we do not.
Are there any written protests received?
No, there is not.
All right, and also, are there any persons registered to vote in the territory of the district?
No registered voters.
All right. Madam Clerk, have the owners of all the taxable property consented to holding special election immediately following the public hearing?
Yes, they have.
All right, and then, Madam Clerk, do you concur that the special election may be held?
Yes, I do.
I'm going to close the public hearing at 8:41. Councilmembers, do we have any comments or discussion? Okay.
I have a question on the city fees that includes the animal shelter, and that's the animal shelter DIF that we have, as I understand. And DIFs are for future projects, are they not?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, is it the city's intent that we collect money for a future city?
No, I mean, being in the formation documents, it's really just putting kind of everything under the umbrella that could potentially be eligible.
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt you because it's been a long night, but our staff needs to look at our MO, our, the JPA documents with the animal shelter, and the cost it would be to the city to get out of that, out of that JPA. I don't think that we, at this time, it would be expensive because we'd have to pay off our share of the bonds to do that, and I don't think we are going to want to have to do that. And so you may want to reconsider and look at having an animal shelter DIF in there because I know it goes to the developer, but ultimately, the residents pay it.
Yeah, and ultimately, before any bonds would be issued, the additional documents would come to the finance committee and the council, and those fees could be excluded from those documents.
I think in the bigger picture, we need to look at for the future on that. I just want to make sure the staff's aware that, you know, we're collecting money for something we probably will never do because we already have a JPA for an animal shelter.
And to be clear, we do collect the animal shelter DIF fees from the developers in connection with the projects, and those are used towards our obligation to pay for our contributions for the construction of the animal shelter, but we just don't currently include those as part of the reimbursable fees that are reimbursed through bond proceeds. But the developers do pay the animal shelter DIF fees, and we use that towards our contribution under the JPA agreement.
Okay. So we're collecting a DIF for an existing facility? I'm a little confused as to why we would do that. If DIF is for future needs, but we already have an existing facility...
DIF fees could be collected to pay for the debt service of construction where you have fronted money, and then you collect on DIFs as you go to pay for that facility.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
All right, so can I get a motion? Councilmembers, we're going to adopt two resolutions. One of them is a resolution establishing CFD 24-1 and calling an election, and also a resolution determining the necessity to incur bonded indebtedness. Can we take that vote? Can we get a motion, please?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, that passed unanimously. Madam Clerk, have you received the official ballots and waivers from the landowners who can cast their votes on behalf of the owners of all the property?
Yes, I have.
Councilmembers, can I get a motion to adopt a resolution declaring those results?
And it was a yes vote.
Thank you.
So moved.
Okay. Thank you, Dean. That passed unanimously. Madam Clerk, would you read the ordinance by title, please?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Menifee, California, acting in its capacity as the legislative body of community facilities, District Number 2024-1, Banner Park 2 of the City of Menifee, authorizing the levy of special taxes.
Can I get a motion to introduce the ordinance, please?
So moved.
Okay. That gets, that passed unanimously. We're at the finish line on 11.3. Let's go to 11.4. This is the introduction and formation of a CFD for Golden Meadows. I'm going to move to the public hearing and open it at 8:46. Madam Clerk, was this legally noticed?
Yes, it was.
Is there any public testimony on this item?
No, there is not.
Any written protests?
None.
Any persons registered to vote in the territory?
None.
Have the owners of all the taxable property consented to holding the election immediately following this public hearing?
Yes, they have.
All right, and do you concur that the election can be held?
Yes, I do.
I'm going to close the public hearing, 8:46. Councilmembers, do we have any discussion? Hearing none. I'll ask for a motion to adopt the two resolutions. One is to establish a CFD for Golden Meadows, and also a resolution determining the necessity to incur bonded indebtedness. Let's take our, let's get a motion, please. Let's take our, let's get a motion, please. Okay, that passed unanimously. Madam Clerk, have you received the official ballots and waivers from the landowners who can cast votes on the behalf of the owners of all the property?
Yes, I have, and it was a yes vote.
Thank you. It's, it's a yes. I always forget to ask you to declare that result, but councilmembers, can I get a motion to adopt a resolution declaring the yes vote results?
I'll move.
Okay?
Second.
All right, let's vote. That passed unanimously. Madam Clerk, would you read the title of the ordinance?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Menifee, California, acting in its capacity as a legislative body of community facilities, District Number 2024-2, Golden Meadows of the City of Menifee, authorizing the levy of special taxes within the improvement areas one through four therein.
Okay, can I get a motion to introduce the ordinance, please?
So moved.
Yeah, hop in. Water's fine. That's right. That passed unanimously. We're on our 11.5. Same thing. We are doing an introduction formation of a CFD for Riverwalk Village. That's 24-3. I'll move to open the public hearing, 8:48. Madam Clerk, was this legally noticed?
Yes, it was.
Do we have any public testimony on the item?
No, we do not.
Any written protests received?
No, we do not.
Are there any persons registered to vote in the territory of the district?
No, there is not.
Have the owners of all the taxable property consented to holding a special election immediately following the public hearing?
Yes, they have.
And do you concur that the election may be held?
Yes, I do.
I'm going to close the public hearing at 8:49. Any discussion, councilmembers? Can I get it? Okay.
I have one thing. I just want to point out that now that we're financing school, school fees, that the school districts are now adding a 125% premium to that. I know it's lost in the documents, but, you know, that's, that's a cost to our future residents. I just want to make sure that, that make that known to our residents that's what's happening. That's all I have on that.
All right, maybe Mr. Hickey, are you able to help us understand what our intentions are there with that premium?
Sure. I mean, really, it's, it's a, it's a policy driven by the school district. It's not really under the city's control what the school district requires. The, the, the developer prepares the request to form the CFD and lists the fees that they intend to be reimbursed through future bond proceeds, and, and, and that's what they're, what they're asking for. And so it, if, if we were to say, no, we don't want to do that, or you, 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 we won't do that, then they may be motivated to go to the school district and do a separate CFD through them, but I don't know that there would be a real mechanism to remove those fees from the, from the CFD overall.
I, I understand why that, you know, the school district's trying to recoup potential revenue for what the state won't, won't provide them, but at the same time, you know, I have, it's a, I mean, quite frankly, part of the reason I said we should, the city should be in control of CFDs is to control what our residents are charged for, you know, their homes because that goes on to what they have to qualify to be, be a homeowner. So it's, it's a, it's another just reaching into homeowners' pockets for it, and I, I feel bad for them. I understand what the schools need that money, but at the same time, you know, if we push them off to the school district, that means residents are paying twice the amount of money to form two CFDs, and that's, it is just.
And, and, and not only that, but even if, if the city allows that fee to be included, the city still has control over the bonds, and so in the future, as interest rates go down, that choice to refund the bonds and pass those savings on to homeowners would still be under the city's control.
I know, it's just almost a matter of prismal with me. I understand it. I see both sides, but I really feel bad for the residents that are going to come and try to, you know, qualify and buy a home here in Menifee when all these fees are added to them, but that's all I have.
Any other discussion, councilmembers? All right, hearing none. Can I get a motion to adopt? We're going to do two resolutions again. One, establishing the CFD for Riverwalk 24-3, and also determining the necessity to incur bonded indebtedness. We'll get that motion, please.
I'll move.
I'm sorry, did I, was there a second?
I just got it. Okay, that passed unanimously. Madam Clerk, have you received the official ballots and waivers from the landowners that can cast their votes on behalf of the owners of all the property?
Yes, I have, and it was a yes vote.
Thank you. And can I get a motion to adopt the resolution declaring that yes vote? And then, Madam, that passed unanimously. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title by, of the ordinance, please?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Menifee, California, acting in its capacity as a legislative body of the community facilities, District Number 2024-3, Riverwalk Village of the City of Menifee, authorizing the levy of special taxes.
Can I get a motion, please, to introduce the ordinance? All right, that passed unanimously. Councilmembers, we are on item 11.6. The next three are the same three projects, but now we're annexing them into the city's maintenance CFD. So the first one being an annexation number 11, Golden Meadows, into the 2017-1 Maintenance Service. I'm going to open the public hearing at 8:53. Madam Clerk, was this legally noticed?
Yes, it was.
Do we have any public testimony?
No, we do not.
Is there any written protest received?
No.
Any persons registered to vote in the territory of the district?
There are none.
Have the owners of the taxable property consented to holding the special election immediately following the public hearing?
Yes, they have.
Do you concur that the election may be held?
Yes, I do.
I'm going to close the public hearing at 8:54. Councilmembers, any discussion? Can I get a motion to adopt the resolution calling an election and to levy special tax on that land?
I'll move.
Okay, that passed unanimously. Madam Clerk, have you received the official ballots and other election materials from the landowners that can cast their votes on behalf of the owners of the property included in the territory that is proposed to be annexed?
Yes, I have, and there are yes votes.
They are yes. And so councilmembers, can I get a motion to adopt a resolution that declares that yes vote? All right, and that passed unanimously. Madam Clerk, if you'd please read the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Menifee, California, amending ordinance number 2017-231 and levying special taxes to be collected during fiscal year 2024 to 2025 to pay the annual cost of the maintenance and servicing of streetlights, parks, parkways, streets, roads, and open space in the operation and maintenance of storm drainage systems, a reserve fund for capital replacement and administrative expenses with respect to the City of Menifee, Community Facilities, District Number 2017-1, Maintenance Services for Annexation Number 11.
Man, that was really good. All right, can I get a motion to introduce the ordinance, please?
I'll move.
Stephanie, you're a better reader than me. All right, that passed unanimously. Let's move to item 11.7. This one is also a Maintenance Services Annexation CFD, Riverwalk Village. I'm going to open the public hearing on this at 8:55. Madam Clerk, was it legally noticed?
Yes, it was.
Any public testimony?
None.
Any written protests?
None.
Are there any persons registered to vote in the territory of the district?
There are none.
Have the owners of the taxable property consented to holding a special election immediately following this public hearing?
Yes, they have.
And do you concur that the election may be held?
Yes, I do.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing, 8:56. Councilmembers, any discussion on this one? Can I get a motion to adopt a resolution calling the election and levying the special tax on the land?
So moved.
That passed unanimously. Madam Clerk, have you received the official ballots and other election materials from the landowners that can cast their votes on behalf of the owners of the property included in the territory proposed to be annexed?
Yes, I have, and it was a yes vote.
Perfect. How about the motion to adopt the resolution declaring that yes vote? I think that we just need a vote. That passed unanimously. Madam Clerk, if you wouldn't mind reading the ordinance by title?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Menifee, California, amending ordinance number 2017-231 and levying special taxes to be collected during fiscal year 2024-25 to pay the annual cost of the maintenance and services of streetlights, parks, parkways, streets, roads, and open space in the operation and maintenance of storm drain systems, a reserve fund for capital replacement, administrative expenses with respect to the City of Menifee, Community Facilities, District 2017-1, Maintenance Services Annexation Number 21.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to introduce the ordinance, please? All right, you guys, we are on the very end here, the last one. This is 11.8. That passed unanimously, by the way. Councilmembers, we're going to just open the public hearing right now. It's 8:57. Madam Clerk, was this one legally noticed?
Yes, it was.
Any public testimony?
No, there's not.
Any written protests received?
None.
Any persons registered to vote in the territory of the district?
No, there is not.
Have all the owners of the property that's taxable consented to holding the special election immediately following this public hearing?
Yes, they have.
And do you concur that the special election may be held?
Yes, I do.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing, 8:58. Council, any comments or discussion? Can I get a motion to adopt a resolution that calls for the election and to levy a special tax on the land? That passed unanimously. Madam Clerk, have you received the official ballots and other election materials from the landowners that can cast their votes on behalf of the owners of the property included in the territory proposed to be annexed?
Yes, I have, and it was a yes vote.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt that yes vote declaration result for the special election? That passed unanimously. Would you please read the ordinance by title?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Menifee, California, amending ordinance number 2017-231 and levying special taxes to be collected during fiscal year 2024-25 to pay the annual cost of the maintenance of servicing of streetlights, parks, parkways, streets, roads, and open space in the operation and maintenance of storm drain systems, a reserve fund for capital replacement and administrative expenses with respect to the City of Menifee, Community Facilities, District Number 2017-1, Maintenance Services Annexation Number 23.
You're putting Evelyn Wood to shame. All right, can I get a motion to introduce the ordinance, please? And the result is that passed unanimously. You guys, thank you, everybody, for your patience. We are now on item 12. There's no discussion items, so Mr. City Attorney, item 13, anything?
No reports tonight, Mayor.
All right, and item 14, is our city manager, do you have anything to report for, sir?
No report, but I'd just like to take a moment to thank our city clerk's office for all the behind-the-scenes work they do. They, they make it seem seamless, and also our production team out there in that room over there. As you know, we were having a heck of a lot of problems with technology, and now I think we fixed them all, so I want to thank them for their diligence and good work. Thank you.